I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. We're going to start with a few continuances before we dig into the meat of the meeting.
You want a motion on item seven H?
Please.
To take item seven H out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Item seven H is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.3.2.22.22 Solar Energy Systems, ground-mounted, of the zoning bylaws. Fifty Margaret Street Northeast Solar Services, doing business as Revolution, is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take item seven I.
No, I have to read something. I was sleeping. Continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.3.2.22 Solar Energy Systems, ground-mounted of zoning bylaw fifty Margaret Street Northeast Solar Services, doing business as Revolution, is how that's pronounced, Revolution, applicant.
Yes.
So the motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of October sixteenth, as requested by the applicant in an email dated September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero.
Motion to take item seven I, seven J, out of order and together for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero.
This is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.3.2.22 Outdoor Storage of Supplies and Equipment, incidental to permitted use as subject to requirements for location, lighting, screening, fencing, cover, and safety precautions of the zoning bylaw three seventy-six Cambridge Street, The Granite Place Incorporated, applicant.
Before we move on, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I thought we had discussed that if this were to continue again, we needed to make sure that some of the changes that we had requested down there were made while the continuance went on.
We did. I'm still working on the document with the building department.
Okay.
So I just don't have it ready for you this evening, but we'll have it. We've already discussed it with the applicant. They're ready to agree to it, and we'll read that into the record on the seventh.
So we're making progress?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, they're looking for an alternative site. It's just, what are their operations going to be between now and then?
Now and then.
As well as, how are they going to deal with the cease and desist letter from the building department? So we're in the process of putting that letter together. I just, again, just don't have it finalized for you guys tonight. But I did say that we would be putting together an agreement for the continuance, and that is in process, and we will have you endorse it on the seventh. But it will be done far before the seventh. We can actually have you endorse it at the next meeting.
Yes.
The commitment. I mean, they're on for November seventh, but at the...
Okay, I don't see any reason why we'd have to wait that long, right?
No, because it's just, it's not you guys discussing it. It's a letter that our department and the building department are putting together jointly.
Okay, but the applicant has agreed verbally to what we are looking for. Okay, thank you.
I didn't read item J.
Okay, thank you.
Continued discussion, applicant, for application for approval of minor engineering change, three seventy-six Cambridge Street, The Granite Place, applicant. And I did have a question. I guess it's in progress, but I wondered if there was any timeline, because we were looking, as I last recall, for a decision from the building inspector.
There was progress on that. He did make a determination that they could not expand their fabrication within, and I don't want to talk too much about anything new, but we did talk about this at the last meeting, that we discussed this, that they couldn't expand the fabrication outside of the footprint that they're already in. So that has caused them to search for alternative locations. That along with the discussion you've had so far, so...
So there was no decision whether it was a permitted use or not? I thought that was what the essence of it was, is that granite cutting and so forth going to be allowed in that zone?
He's holding the determination of the previous building inspector from two thousand and seven within the tenant space that they're currently in, but not allowing it to expand past that, because that would mean it was a principal use, and it is not allowed as a principal use within that zone.
So that was the decision of the previous building inspector?
That they could do it as accessory in that small area.
So he just blessed that?
He said you can continue doing what you're doing, but you can't expand.
Okay, thank you. Well, I was concerned for the neighbors, so...
We all are. I agree. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of November seventh, two thousand and nineteen, as requested by the applicant's engineer in an email dated September thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Five zero.
You can do item K, Mike.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items seven K out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Item seven K is a public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, sixty-one Center Street, town of Burlington, is the applicant.
Motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of November seventh, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Next, we have citizens' time. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a matter that is not on our agenda, please come forward. Welcome, Mr. Miller.
Got your old school shirt.
My name is Dave Miller, precinct four, meeting member, nineteenth Gloria Circle, and a couple of things I want to bring up about, or at least get an update on the General Walker Estates issue. So I wanted to get an update on it, also in light of the fact that yesterday and today, the new owners of Five Dartmouth had put fencing in their backyard. So I just want to know, was that a sign that you were not able to get the developer to excavate out the two to three feet of grading, or that nobody just told them that there's still a pending issue that needs to get resolved?
I don't think we were aware that fencing was going in.
Well, remember, the last meeting, I said we overheard a conversation, that we saw the new owners walking around, pointing out, talking about fencing. I think somebody said, oh, we ought to tell them.
Yeah.
But anyway, that's not my issue. It was just like, I just don't know if that was a sign that things, something had been decided, or they just didn't know about it.
I don't have an update. They, I don't have an update from them. Nothing has been decided to date. So I, the fencing going in wasn't a reaction to everything's all set. So again, we can continue to, we put a halt on everything moving forward for them. So you'd think that would be an impetus to respond in an expeditious manner, but it hasn't been as expeditious as we hoped.
So they're not allowed to do anything else with any of the other properties on the site, but they have not responded to our initial or to our complaints about what they did at that particular site?
They have responded, acknowledging the receipt of the letter and stating they will be responding, but we don't have a response.
And was the letter sent?
Late August.
Okay. I mean, what is our alternative now? What is our recourse? They're ignoring us.
We're exploring multiple options of what happens if you don't issue an extension of time to complete the subdivision?
Right. I'm not sure if the board or the neighbors are aware of that. I think it might be appropriate to explain that situation.
Well, as I said at the last meeting, the best outcome is to get this resolved by the developer.
Great.
We are holding a bond for the public improvements. They, their extension of time either has run out or is about to run out. It's very soon. I don't remember it off the top of my head.
I think I checked, according to the decision document, it was when a particular document was registered at the land court. I think that was September sixth, this September sixth.
Right. So then, it's expired. For them to continue, they need to come in for a continuance. You can decide to not grant the continuance, but at the same time, you would need to, if you weren't going to allow them to move forward, we'd have to start rescission procedures, which take a long time and don't always resolve the issues at hand. So the first line of, first line is obviously to try to get the resolution. Other, because the last time we did a rescission, as many of you know that were on the board, it was a lot of time that passed with zero activity and nothing solved. So that's not an optimum solution, but it's a solution that we might have to bring to the table in order to get some things resolved.
At the last meeting, remember, Mr. Kelly proposed an idea, I don't know how realistic it was, because of the water issues that we're talking about, of saying this is an emergency thing because of the water pooling and stuff with the triple E and West Nile virus, and maybe getting the Board of Health or whatever. I don't know if that's realistic. But that was something that he had suggested at the last time I was here at citizens' time.
I'm not sure of the procedures of the Board of Health for that type of thing, but we can look into them.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to just talk about, the last time...
Before we move on, I'm not satisfied with, I'm not satisfied. This is dragging on entirely too long, and I want us to take the next step. I think we need to do something to require them to come forward, and if they're not going to come forward and do what we told them to do, then let's begin the process of rescission. I think that's appropriate. And if they decide to come back to the table and fix everything once they receive notice of that, fine. But if they don't, let's start the process.
We can put a letter together to that effect.
Okay, and...
One of the big problems that I've seen happen in the past, that if you do something like that, then there's no reason for the people who own the property project, whatever, to do anything further to make it better or anything. So it could sit that way for two, three years.
I do understand that. There are two properties that are completed. We have money that we are holding, that we could use to address some of the problems that they have created.
Public improvements, I think, is what that money is for. Is it not the roadway?
Can we use them to correct things that they did on the properties that are against, that they were not allowed to do?
You could use them for the features that are associated with the roadway drainage.
Which is one of the problems. Okay.
Partially, yes.
I'm not trying to...
No, I understand.
I'm just trying to, speaking from experience, that's all.
Bernie's correct, that you have to use it for the direct public improvement.
I understand that.
Part of the public improvement.
This developer's clearly not responding purposefully. They can't just drag this out forever. And I understand, I think we've been very patient. I think the neighborhood has been exceptionally patient under very difficult circumstances. So I personally think that we need to take further steps. So if you could draft a letter to that effect, and then the board can review it next week, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Miller.
If I may say, I agree with the chair. I mean, this project, since it began just about, is like a chronic recurring headache.
Yes.
And I think that we, if we have any leverage, that we ought to exert the maximum amount of leverage that we have. Because if we can stop them from doing any further building, I mean, unless they have unlimited access to funds, you know, they're not going to be able to build out those little lots. And if that's the only leverage we have, you know, if we have to hire security to go down there and see nothing happens, you know, I'd be willing to do whatever, because it's not only not right what they're doing as far as that neighborhood, but it's a very bad example of what you can do in the town of Burlington if you want to. So...
Point of information, the other three, three of the lots, they've, the current waypoint who owns the project has those lots up for sale. They're selling off the lots.
Well, they, I don't think they can do that.
They can't sell them until they're released from the covenant.
If you go to real estate...
They can't do it, though. Legally, they can't sell those lots, correct? Are they aware of that? Let's make sure they're aware.
Yeah, because like I say, if you go to any real estate site, you look for properties in Burlington, you'll see the three lots up for sale.
They are held under covenant, held by this board.
Okay, thank you. And you had another point, Mr. Miller?
Yeah. At the last meeting, when I was here with my neighbor, Dr. Griffin, who's in the audience here, he brought up the wisdom of putting irrigation systems over an infiltration system, putting something that pumps water in
Right.
over something that's supposed to protect us from stormwater. And I just triggered in my mind, because I have an irrigation system, and I know it's not unusual over a course of a season for me to use, like, because I have a separate water meter, so I know how much I use. So fifty thousand gallons over a course of a summer is not unusual. And if there are two houses there with irrigation systems, that means over a course of summer, it could be easily a hundred thousand gallons of water being poured in there. Now, I don't know anything about infiltration systems, but a hundred thousand sounds like a big number to me. Maybe it's not.
Certainly seems counterintuitive to place that over a drainage system.
And if you question my, if you want to sanity check my numbers, just talked to Mr. Sanchez, head of DPW, because he has all the statistics and numbers. He's always telling us at town meeting when it comes to explaining why we need watering bans and why we need hook to the umderr way. So he can give you all this, you know, what the average person uses in terms of water. So anyway, I just want to bring up that point. And also, to even emphasize that more, if you remember during the public hearings for this project, at least one of the board members made the observation that this was the first time that the planning board considered and approved a project where if the infiltration system fails, the abutters get flooded, not the new homeowners. So that's why we're very sensitive to that.
Absolutely. And there also happens to be a water ban in effect right now. So whatever infiltration, whatever irrigation system they put in cannot be turned on. They can't be using it.
They are.
They're using it.
Because we can, in fact, we see it, even the previous ban was odd even days. They must just have it on automatic.
I believe it's a total water ban right now.
Anyway, their watering is not my issue. I'm just trying to get...
No, but perhaps we can reach out to the new owners who are probably not aware that we're underwater banned. Is that something our office can do, or is that something who... Let's look into who should reach out to those neighbors, because I think we, I would like to, I'm assuming that they don't know.
Probably the DPW, because...
Perhaps.
I know sometimes with, with town watering bans in the past, if you're trying to start a new lawn, they give you an exemption for a certain amount of time. I don't know if that happened with this complete watering ban or not.
Well...
I don't know.
I was there today to inquire, because the turkeys have taken up my lawn as a place to go to dig. And so I've been trying to keep up with it. And so I asked them, I said, I wanted, you know, make sure. And they said, you can use a handheld hose, but that's it.
That's it.
So...
I know, so we don't really actually know what the proper procedure is, but Liz, could you just look into what that procedure is and let me know? And we need to make sure that those homeowners are aware that they are not allowed to use that irrigation system currently, unless they have achieved, unless they've received a special exemption, which we have to find out. I would think, I mean, I would hope that they would not be able to receive such an exemption with everything that we have on hold over there. But we'll look into it. Okay.
Okay. The last thing, it's nothing to do with General Walker Estates.
Okay.
And it was the observation that Mr. Raymond made about, I'm wearing the Boston Latin shirt. I did that because this is the first planning board meeting without long-term member Jack Kelly.
Yeah.
He is a alumni of Boston Latin.
Right.
And I thought this would be a tribute, a small tribute that I could do for all his long and hard, many years of service to this community, and he'll be sorely missed.
Well, thank you. Before the night's over, I'm going to suggest that we do something more than that.
Absolutely, yes. But thank you. And Jack is going to be sorely missed. I don't know if he's watching. He might have decided to do something else on his Thursday night, but if he is watching, I'm sure that he appreciates the gesture.
I was going to say, if he's watching, Jack, we have two openings on the bylaw review committee.
And then drag him out.
Thank you for your patience, Mr. Miller. You've been very patient.
Yes, indeed.
Better process.
Thank you for listening.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to announcements. Oh, wait, no, an appointment. Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
I was trying to give out the people's chance.
Oh.
Hold it short. Neil Russell, twenty-six Cormier Road. We had brought a letter from our lawyer to the meeting two weeks ago regarding the one oh eight Mueller. I was wondering if we could get a status on that, or when we might expect a status update. Hopefully, a letter may be stating the town's position on, in response to our letter.
Okay, I don't know if we have an official response at this time. I know, was this, this went to the Board of Appeals, did it not?
The Board of Appeals on Tuesday were entertaining a, an extension of time for their variance.
Okay, it's just an extension.
I don't know what happened on Tuesday.
Variants for...
For the variance that was, was, the frontage variance for this frontage and lot width variance, for this lot that allowed it to come here. So in terms of the letter, it's still under review. It's going to town council, for town council to review, and we should have a response, a response back of some form shortly, but I don't have one yet tonight.
Sure. It would be helpful, from my standpoint, if that was either an email or a written letter to twenty-six Cormier, thirty Cormier, and probably one oh eight Mueller, I would expect, in terms of the position. I do have other copies of the letter on nicer paper than I brought last time, if anybody needed those. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on a matter that's not on our agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we are going to move on. We have a very special appointment for tonight. Kristen, do you want to take the lead?
Thank you. Yes, I will make a recommendation, and then the board can make a motion. So Liz has been with us since two thousand and fifteen. We interviewed her when I was eight and three quarters months pregnant. And it was a great interview. We interviewed, actually we had a pretty large pool of applicants at that time. Hopefully, we'll have an equally as large pool at this time. But we interviewed her, interviewed her twice. And literally, I was on my way to the hospital. I texted Josh at five o'clock in the morning and said, call her references. If they all say yes, hire Liz today. And he did. And you guys, you guys blessed Liz as the assistant planner, and she's been fantastic ever since. And she, like I, kind of started, I don't know if you remember, but when I started, Tony went on a paternity leave right when I started. So it was kind of like, ah, like, you know, you just said, trust, trust your gut.
Follow my fire.
And, you know, you know, it'll, you know, ask people questions, and it was a good way to kind of under, meet the rest of the departments and kind of just, I don't know. It was, it was good for me, and I think as much, as difficult as it was for Liz and Josh, it was good, really good for Liz to take charge, figure out what had to be done. It wasn't, what's my exact role, but it's what is, what does the department need? And she's filled that role extremely well. And I think she did a lot for, you know, Josh was her boss, but she also did a lot for Josh. And I think really put him in a place to do other things as well, but not that, anyway. But anyway, she's worked for the department for four years. She has a master's degree in planning from Tufts University and has extensive experience with the day-to-day permitting that we've been doing. She was also instrumental in getting our zoning bylaws up to, up to date online. Huge projects, our zoning, I mean, our zoning maps, not bylaws, zoning maps up to date that hadn't been done for forty years or so. She's also got our app geo, our online mapping system up and running, and has been super instrumental with Jen and Amy to get viewpoint up and running, which we just went live with on the first. So overall, I think she's grown tremendously since she's taken the position, and she has a lot of institutional knowledge with everyone in Burlington. And she has been a remarkably quick study of the tasks of the senior planner, and has already assumed many of the day-to-day application processing responsibilities with ease. So with that, I strongly endorse Liz as the candidate for senior planner, and recommend she begin at grade twelve, step five. And her visionary planning skills, organization, and ability to think out of the box will be a tremendous asset to the planning department, and I hope that we will be able to retain her skillset for many years to come.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. I would like to echo the sentiments that Kristen expressed. I think that we're incredibly lucky to have Liz. She is hardworking and smart, and has the respect of all of the town departments, as well of all of the business community that we work with. I could not think of anyone better qualified for this position. I think that we're really lucky to have her. I echo what Kristen said, that I strongly recommend that she be named senior planner at grade twelve, step five. I think it's really important that we all understand her value, and that we can't afford to lose her. I know that many, many other communities that are similar to Burlington, that have similar workloads to Burlington, have much larger staff. And we are able to work with a much smaller staff because our people are great, and they deserve to be compensated for the work that they do. So I want to thank both Kristen and Liz, because they've been working really hard with a very small staff. But I'm very, very pleased that we are able to offer Liz this opportunity. I know that she's going to do a great job.
I'd like to echo your sentiments, Madam Chair, with the addition of, if at all possible, since Liz commutes from the North Shore, maybe we can work a helicopter into our budget. But with that said, I'd like to make a motion that the planning board, the planning board officially appoints Elizabeth Von... Do that for...
Van Ventry.
Van Ventry. I always mispronounce that. Sorry, Liz. To the position of senior planner endorses the planning director's recommended compensation at grade twelve, step five. The planning board further optimizes the planning director to work with HR to send out the official notification to bring her aboard as soon as possible.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Congratulations, Liz.
Thank you so much. Thanks, guys. I really like working here, so thank you for giving me this opportunity in the first place, and now in the second place. So thanks so much.
Welcome aboard.
Still the first place.
Question for Steph.
Assistant planner.
But you're still number one.
Oh, Kristen.
Question for Steph. Where are you with, obviously, the position wasn't vacant until tonight, but how quickly will it be able to advertise for?
We should be ready to post next week. The question that I just wanted to have with the chairman and anyone else who wanted to be involved is just, and I'll send it out soon, just our existing job description, and if there's anything else you want to think about modifying.
Including in it, huh?
Otherwise, it's ready to go.
Yes, we need to move quickly.
There. We updated it when we, when Liz was hired, and it's, it's up to, it's up to where we need it to be in terms of skills and assets. So we could post it as soon as next week.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, I think that should be our goal.
Until then, we're going to work, Liz, like a renter.
It does make a huge difference being down one person.
Oh, I know it does. Yes.
You don't, you, you know, if someone's on vacation or something, you kind of deal with it, but it's, this is totally different. It's...
Yes, it is.
We're way too busy to be down a person.
Yes, I completely agree. So...
Okay.
Okay, let's move on to announcements. I know we have a great number of them today.
Do you want to start with the first announcement of the planning board seat?
Oh, of course. Thank you for the reminder. The planning board has a planning board member seat open on the selected board. The Burlington Board of Selectment and Burlington Planning Board will be making a joint planning board interim member announcement. At this time, we're seeking residents who wish to serve their community as an interim planning board member. A review of candidates will be made by a subcommittee, and the final candidates for the position will be presented at a joint meeting to be held on October twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen. The individual appointed to the planning board will serve from the date of the appointment until the town's two thousand and twenty annual election in April. Currently, the planning board meets on the first and third Thursdays of every week of every month at seven PM. So if you want to do it, you have to be available at those times. If you wish to be considered for the position, please go to the town website where there is an application that you can download and send in. The deadline for submitting applications is October fifteenth at four thirty PM. We are hoping to receive many applications. I can tell you that this is a very hardworking board, but a very cooperative and professional board. And I know that whomever the new member turns out to be, that we will welcome them, and we'll look forward to working with them, hopefully for a long time.
Let them know that this is Stipend also, because that might be attractive.
There's a very generous by Stipend.
How much is that?
Four, four hundred.
Five hundred dollars, four hundred dollars?
Sixty.
All right. But we're expecting people to do this out of a genuine desire to serve their community. their community.
All right, not for the money.
All right, other announcements?
Other announcements, the Fire Safety will be having an open house on October 6 from 10 to 1 at their new fire station, too. The Sculpture Park Subcommittee is meeting October 8 at 7:30 AM in the High School Principals Conference Room. The Zoning Bylaw Review Committee is also meeting on October 9 at 6:00 PM in the Town Hall Annex Basement Meeting Room. Town offices will be closed on Columbus Day, October 14. Reminder, our next Planning Board meeting is moved from Thursday to Wednesday, October 16, for this board and anyone watching. Also, there's mandatory open meeting law training for boards and committees. It will be, it will be, the presentation will be made by our legal counsel, Lisa Mead. She's holding two sessions, both on October 23, one at four o'clock and one at 7:00 PM, and she will be covering open meeting law as well as the new remote participation that was passed by the Selectmen, and so what I recommend after, after we, she has that on the 23rd, that on November 7, this board discussed the remote participation and kind of what we wanna do with that. And lastly, zoning bylaws for January due October 26, right around the corner.
I did wanna mention for the benefit of the board that Member Espo has already expressed interest in attending the open meeting session. Everyone is encouraged to do so, but Mike has volunteered to be our representative if others cannot make it.
Yeah, it's four and seven, is that the times?
Four o'clock and seven o'clock.
Yes.
And I have one more announcement, the, you saw the paper today, the, the restaurant shuttle, late night Lowell to Burlington shuttle.
Oh.
Is off the ground.
Oh.
So, we, big thanks to Ken Gordon and Cindy Friedman and Middlesex Three Coalition for, and as well as the Chamber for really making that happen, and getting our hospitality workers where they need to go after the MBTA buses shut down at, you know, right about dinnertime, so.
How often does that run?
I'm not sure yet, it's, I'm not sure, but I'm sure we can find out all the information, but it, the whole plan was really for restaurant hospitality, that, you know, we've grown tremendously in Burlington, and there's really no transportation after 9:30, 10 o'clock. It's been a big problem in Burlington to try to retain employees.
I just had one, if I could.
Of course.
Becat has finally been able to take the feed from the projector that gets used here very often, and feed it directly to them, so they're gonna be picking up what you see on the screen from the projector from now on.
Oh, great.
So they'll be able to do a split screen and whatever, but there is one, excuse me, one caveat on that, if people, I know Jack was, and sometimes Attorney Buckley uses a pointer and points at the screen, they will not see that.
Okay, good to know.
And therefore, people at home won't see it, so it would be better if somebody had the mouse and could use the mouse to do it, okay?
Thank you, Ernie.
Sure.
Madam Chair, one more?
Oh, yes.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, as notified today by one of the middle school science teachers, that on October 8, from 2:30, 3:30, they're looking to have some folks from the Planning Board, possibly Planning Staff, to show up there. Lego Robotics Group is working on a city planning for the team challenge. So I know, Member Espo, I think you've already been notified that, and I think are attending, so that's, October 8, it's a Tuesday, 2:30 to 3:30 at the Marshall Simons Middle School, if, I think if you're interested in going, get there about 2:15 to sign in.
And if any member of our staff actually has time to go, they would do that with our full support. I think it would be wonderful for the kids to get that kind of support from professional planners.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, I'll be going. I was asked by one of the teachers at Marshall Simons, so, great.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Well, we can get a report back from Mike if we can go.
That's right, okay. Moving on, our next item, we have no, non, no legal notices or non-approvals, so next we have item seven, Administrative Matters. Item 7A is a discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering, excuse me, engineering change, 84 Bedford Street, Crown Castle for Sprint is the applicant. Welcome, please identify yourself for the record, sir.
Evening, Jeff Barbadora from Crown Castle for the Sprint application, 84 Bedford Street. So Sprint is on the tower, their antennas are encased inside the tower, they're camouflaged, and they're gonna replace their three antennas with three new antennas. So the, the exterior of the pole, the top ten feet, will increase by 12 inches.
That's what they're requesting, correct?
The diameter.
Yes, they're requesting that. It's not done.
Yeah, I mean, to, right.
Okay.
To fit their antennas.
Yes.
The antennas are a little bit bigger, and they're bigger because of the, the function of the antennas, they do three different things now, and with the consumption of data, they're all using, all the carriers are using bigger antennas.
Okay, can you explain why this is necessary and what problem you're trying to solve?
Sure. So right now, it's 4G is the current technology, and, and all the carriers are having issues with capacity because of the consumption of data. That is just increasing with the use of iPhones, and it's because of the iPhones and the other phones that they make. So it's, it's got to do with capacity issues for the current technology, and then for 5G, these are compatible antennas for the new technology, 5G, that, you know, whenever that comes out.
Okay, I'm not sure I'm hearing what the problem is that you're trying to solve. This is in a residential area, so are we having issues with residents that are unable to access what they need? Are we having, are we getting complaints? Are there problems? Or is this just sort of forward-thinking, the next step?
It's, I mean, it's a little of both. I'm not, I don't know anything about complaints or anything like that, but, but like I said, capacity of these sites is an issue with the influx, with the increase of iPhones. Looking forward, it is, these are compatible antennas for the 5G.
Okay. My concern is that, do we have the picture that we saw in the office earlier? This is, you had it up there, what it looks like today, but what you're proposing.
It's in the, the.
This one?
Yes.
Yeah, A1 and A2.
Thank you.
A1 and A2.
The, the building inspector also had comments.
Okay, let's hear those first, while we try and find the pictures, thank you.
Comments from the building inspector, "The building department has no objections, suggest that applicant and/or owner revise application to include the increase of diameter of monopole for all carriers. If not done, this approval is just for the top carrier location. Any modifications by other carriers will be required to apply to and get approval from the Planning Board for the same proposed work."
Is it, are there any other comments?
No other comments.
So the concern that I'm having is that this is just for one carrier, and right now, what this appears like from people, when people are driving by, it looks like a flagpole with no flag. But if we start putting additional equipment on this pole, it becomes unsightly, especially if we have your equipment, and then someone else's, and someone else's, and it cascades down, and it becomes very unsightly. So I'm concerned about that, especially in light of the fact that no one can really tell me what problem it is that we're solving. I am hesitant to create an eyesore to solve a problem that I'm not sure exists, but I would like to hear from the rest of my board, and I don't know that anyone's had a chance to actually go out there and look at the site, but it's difficult because what this, what you're proposing isn't there today, so we have to sort of imagine. Can you describe what it will look like, and its, its height, weight, bulk?
I mean, if you look at sheet A2 of the CDs.
Yes.
I mean, essentially, it's gonna be 12 inches larger than the current diameter. Current diameter is 24 inches.
So it's gonna be 36 inches in diameter?
Correct. So, I mean, it's gonna look a little larger than, than the pole, you know, if you look at A2.
Okay, and it will be at the top of the pole. Is it white like the pole is?
Correct.
It is white?
Yep, maybe the same color.
So it's 36 inches in diameter?
Yep.
That's very large.
I've seen them 48.
In residential areas?
Yeah, I mean, this is, these poles were built, you know, this one here was 2002. They're really becoming non-functional for the carrier because of the change in technology and the current status of the technology.
Is there any way to camouflage it better?
I, I don't, I don't think so, I mean.
It looks like a flagpole. Could you put a flag on it?
When we, when we originally, I don't know if Paul remembers, but when we originally approved it, the neighbors did not want a flag on it.
Really?
Yes. I distinctly remember that. I'm not sure. They, they thought, maybe they thought it would draw attention to it, and, but I distinctly remember that, and, correct me if I'm wrong, do you, do you have any recollection, Paul? Do you remember anything about that?
By the time I got here.
Ernie, I can't remember my little name some days.
By the time I, it was a little bit before I got here.
That's true, 2002, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, why don't you, why don't you start us off? I wanna hear from the rest of the board, and then maybe see if there are any neighbors in, in the audience tonight.
How, how many carriers does the pole support at the moment? Do you know?
Currently, two.
Two Sprint and T-Mobile only?
Only T-Mobile, correct.
Are there any plans to add any other carriers to it?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, this is a Crown Castle pole, right?
Yeah.
Has any thought been given to, I know it's a little far out, but has any thought been given to making the diameter of the pole consistent? In other words, making the pole three-foot diameter from the top to the bottom. Have you done that in any of the cases?
I'm not, I, probably, but what happens is with these poles, they have an interior spine, and they fail, if you want to do that, so you'd have to rebuild the whole pole.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about just a fiberglass sheath all the way down?
I understand, and the way these poles, because they're, you know, this was, the, I can't say for this one specifically, but because of these poles, the interior spine usually fails. That's what the antennas attach.
Oh, because of the wind load and whatever, maybe, okay.
The increase in wind load, correct, and ice load.
Okay.
So are you saying it's impossible to do that?
Well, I, I think you could, for full disclosure, we actually put the foundation underneath this pole way back when, and I guess they would have to take the pole, yeah, they may have to. Foundation was designed for a specific pole with a specific wind load. The wind load and the ice load is probably more, the more important thing, because you don't want it to fail and snap. It's held into the foundation with huge anchor bolts that may be two and a half, three inches in diameter, and there's, there's a ring of them. You might have to do, I, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, I'm just talking from experience.
But you have concerns.
But you put up a lot of poles.
Pardon?
You, you put the basements in for a lot of poles.
Oh, yeah, we did, we did do a lot of poles.
So you have concern as to whether or not the base could support a three-foot.
Well, I don't know, usually, usually engineers are, depends on how conservative the engineer was. Usually, they're at least a, a two-time safety factor, so the, the foundation and bolt should be able to support something twice as large, but you don't wanna put something twice as large on it, because, I don't, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
To me, actually, I, I don't know, I'd like to hear from the neighbors, but the increase of six inches all around on the pole.
Twelve inches?
No, well, 12 inches diameter, so six inches all around.
I don't know, I was told it was gonna be 36 inches in diameter.
Right, and it's 24 now. So, in other words, six inches on each side.
Okay, yes, yeah.
Does, does not seem to be a big deal, as long as it's obscured the way it is now, but I'd like to, I don't live there anymore, I used to, so I'd like to hear from the residents.
What is the height of that section?
Hundred and twenty foot pole.
Yeah.
No, of just that section?
Ten feet.
So it's 10 feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
But you would prefer the whole pole?
I'd prefer the whole pole. I, technically, I, I mean, if it was my druthers and I'd live next door, I'd prefer the whole pole be one diameter.
Well, that would also mean if the second carrier came in and wanted the same thing, that would also be hidden, as to, if, if you had it all one, one size.
I don't, isn't the second carrier within the 10 feet, no?
It's right under, right underneath.
So it's another 10 feet?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's 20 feet, you're right, you're right.
So I'm just thinking, if you did that, then you could hide both of them, 'cause it's probably safe to assume that they'll be back at some point.
I would assume so.
Okay, thank you, Ernie. Phil?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was actually on the Board of Appeals when, when this came through, and there were certainly concerns with the residents there. At that time, we spent a lot of time on, on overlay, telecom overlay district with regard to the residents, and now with an increase in power on this pole, does that change the overlay, you know, with the impact of, of what they, what they're doing here? That'd be a question I have for staff.
It doesn't change the overlay itself.
So the overlay stays even though you have higher power coming out of, of the antennas?
Well, the, the wireless overlay district is over this site. The variance was for height.
Yep.
The question, I mean, all the questions that were asked at the time when we were originally, were the, you know, what's the RF frequencies, what's the need, what's the map? You know, we asked a little bit different questions now, just because it, you know, data wasn't a thing in 2002 when we, when we permitted this, but I would say that it, I don't think it is outside of what was permitted, with the exception of what was permitted was a monopole, not something that wasn't a mon, and I think this is being kind of piecemeal, it's, you know, is this gonna be on this one?
It's changing the look of it.
It was really important, both, I think, in the Board of Appeals, as well as the Planning Board decision, that it was a single monopole, fully concealed.
That's correct.
So, you know, I think that, that's the question, and kind of what Ernie's getting at, is that if it's gonna, it needs to be consistent from the top to the bottom.
Yep.
But if it's consistent.
I mean, tapered a little bit, but consistent in a, a one single pole.
Right, but if it's 36 inches in diameter at the top, how big would it be at the bottom?
I don't know, I'd have to investigate.
That could be huge.
Yeah, so I think the intent of the Board of Appeals at the time, if I recall, it's been a couple of years, but the intent of it was to make it look like a flagpole, because, you know, there's no way to put a, you're gonna put a phony pine tree there, it's just gonna stick out, and look better, but it was part of the, the overlay district, like you said. I'm just wondering if the overlay district still applies with the, with the different technology here, that the overlay district was, was applied with, with regards to the technology of the day, which was, you know, 20 years ago. And now you've got residences very, very close there, and so normally you'd see a map of what the coverage is and the power coming out of that, and what that looks like today versus what that would look like with the new, with, with the new antennas, you know, you're, you're talking fairly high power, if you're looking at the specs on that. But again, I would say, thinking back to the original Board of Appeals decision, maybe we pull that, see what the conditions are on that, and make sure the conditions are the same, and they don't change with a pole that's gonna have a, dare I say, a nipple at the top, and, you know, kind of coming down below that, yeah, I, I think we need to look at this being a, a straight monopole based on the intent of the Board of Appeals decision back then.
Right, and that's what I was trying to.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
With our decision.
Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What's the, my question's similar to what we had last meeting. What's the criteria for upgrading these poles? Is there like a, a plan, or is there a, like a, do you guys have like a, like a schedule, or like a, a map where you know this area eventually will need it, or this area will need it coming up? Is there a, a plan, or is it just haphazard, you know, we're, we're low here and we wanna fix this one?
So, we as Crown Castle don't have a plan. The carriers, you know, come to us with an application, and then we work on that site, so it's really, the carrier may have a plan, but we, you know, we, I don't know what their plan is, but, you know.
'Cause I foresee that this is gonna be happening a lot with the upgrades to 5G, and we're talking about just Sprint here in this location, and later we'll be talking about Verizon over by Wegmans. It just doesn't seem like there's no coordination between, I mean, in the inspector of buildings comments, he says maybe we should, you know, fit it for multiple tenants. Has that looked at, at all?
Could you say that again?
The, the comment from the inspector of buildings was maybe it should be expanded for multiple carriers, because if it's a name, if it's a problem for Sprint, I foresee it's probably a problem for T-Mobile or will be down the line?
It, I guess, well, here, now Sprint and T-Mobile are merging, so there's gonna be consolidation, so, and I can't say, you know, I can't say to the point. I can't say to the point, just to the point that T-Mobile could go away. So T-Mobile's doing nothing right now.
It just feels like that these are just kind of random. I know it's not you, it's probably a question more suited for the carriers if they have a plan because you're just the contractor that does the work, but it just seems like we're gonna get, be getting a lot of these with 5G coming, and it just seems kind of random. That's my only real concern is, is there a plan to, for the town that, do we look at these for different sites, different carriers, or just, or is it we just take them as they come?
Yeah, it's uncomfortable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's my only question, ma'am chair.
Thank you, Mike.
Ma'am chair, uh, right before, and I had to use your apologies, real quick, as I was thinking about this and looking at the picture. You've got the elevation of that pole, that, that it goes down, down that, the road, down into like a gully where that is. So you've got a, a top elevation. Is that one-twenty-three, is that from, is that sea level there at one-twenty-three or what's that elevation? That's just the height of the pole, right?
It's, it's above ground, above ground level, above ground, it's...
So what's the, do we know what the top of the steeple is over there at the, at the chapel? Because that's, that's higher up, is that gonna be another twenty, thirty, forty feet there? That's another forty, we'll get it to eighty? You know, so I'm wondering if maybe what we, maybe what the 5G ends up in the chapel, at the steeple, you know, where you get the...
Does it have a steeple or just a...
Or just the attic up there.
There's a cupola, I think.
Yeah, cupola maybe. That looks like it's probably, I don't know how tall that is, but I don't know, so maybe that's something...
It's hard to tell in that picture how far up the...
So you can see the pole, the pole's over to the right?
Yeah, it's right there.
Yes.
And maybe it's an optical illusion, but it looks like kind of the same-ish, I just kind of play with it.
You kind of lose it in the sky.
Yeah, that's the idea.
But what do you, what do you need, you know?
What is the height of the pole right now?
One-twenty...
One hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and twenty, okay.
Yeah.
Well, it's one-twenty and then there's a ball on top, so it makes it one-twenty-three.
One-twenty-three.
But the antenna itself was, you know, that's...
You don't know what the elevation of the top of the pole is, do you? From sea level, I mean, you know, the reference elevation.
Above ground level is how we reference it.
Yep.
Look at the bottom on A two, above ground level, one hundred and twenty-five, from the ground level.
It's kind of crazy, because, you know, it's got the two separate things, you know, like if you've ever seen Gaffney Peach down in Gaffney, South Carolina, so it's a water tank that looks like something and they call it something else, the Gaffney Peach. Not my personal, but if you've ever seen it, they call it something else because, based on a, a, a part of the anatomy, right? So I don't think we want to really get into something like this where you've got something that looks like something else and, you know, put a name to it or something, so I think really the monopole is really the way we got to go here. Thank you, ma'am chair.
Thank you. Paul?
No, it's, uh, you guys know the technology, but, uh, to me, everybody loves the technology, but, you know, how do we accommodate for it? And, uh, we don't really have much of an ability to deny because the town would be in an uproar if they, you know, were going down the...
I'm not sure about that.
Huh?
I don't know about that.
Well, I, that's just, uh...
I'm not sure.
You know, I see everybody in, this is not as bad, if you come down Route Two from the west, there's a pine tree there that's a joke. We laugh every time we come around because here's all the pine trees and then this ugly-looking thing that's supposed to look like a pine tree sticking up there, and we say, huh, you know, gee, that was a beautiful solution to that location, but I, you know, as far as the aesthetics of something like this, I mean, it's in the cemetery, you know, and, and that came up when we were discussing it, and somebody was so, well, you don't want something like that in the cemetery where our beloved are buried and so forth, and, but it went up and, uh, it's not offensive to me. I walk down there a lot, that's part of why I walk around through the cemetery and up. And, uh, as we're going to discuss, I'm sure, very soon again, Wegmans, uh, so I, I don't see, we, we did a good job of solving the original problem. We did the overlay and so forth, and rather than spending the next two or three years, every meeting, you know, for hours on a location, we were able in that instance to do that, and I don't see a solution to this problem because we're gonna be, we're gonna be spending a lot of time on this, and, you know, maybe we gotta try to get creative again as far as how we're gonna solve this problem with these locations. These seem to be much smaller. Do you have, that stand that's next to you, how big are these antennas? I thought the antennas were quite, quite small, quite thin.
They're eight feet in length, these antennas, by about twelve inches wide.
So they're twelve, so they're, they're a foot around, so they're not something that you can miss when you look at a location? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
When we put them on, I, I've got Wegmans also, which is not specifically our application, uh, but, uh, I, I'm gonna charge a new assistant planner.
Senior planner. Senior planner.
Senior planner, excuse me. Well, assistant to that, senior planner. But that's just, I'm not gonna say anything more, but...
Well, I think you're right, Paul. This is gonna be something that we're gonna be seeing over and over again, and that's why we have to make sure, just like we said with the Wegmans installation, we need to make sure that what we approve is the gold standard because that's what we're gonna expect everyone else who comes before us to, to emulate. Um, so my question, I'm not, I'm personally not ready to, to decide on this tonight. Um, I would want to know if we are all, it sounds like we're all saying we think a monopole is, is better, and I, I agree with that, but I want to know how big that's going to be at the base, at the top, and I think you'll need to, I would like to know that before I approve it. But before we move on, I'd like to see if there's anyone in the audi...
Just one more question for the applicant.
Sure.
Thank you, or actually, two. Uh, your, your sheet RF one in the set of plans?
Yep.
It's dated this year. Is there an RF one for the existing pole, so we can compare it? Do you know if there's a...
I don't, I don't, I don't.
All right, can, can you, uh, find us that information before the next meeting, if you could? Because these are, these, uh, these have, uh, some of the antennas are twenty-five-hundred-mega, megahertz, and I don't know if, were those on the original in nineteen-hundred megahertz, or were they all eight-hundred in the beginning? So anyways, if you can find the, what's existing on the pole right now, I'd appreciate that, with also the, uh, the, uh, output power of the antenna.
Right.
And one other thing, is the pole that exists right now, is it tapered or is it straight? I don't remember.
I think it's tapered.
I believe it's tapered.
It is tapered, okay, so thank you.
So then, to Ernie's point previously, we would need to have you check and find out if it was a monopole and therefore a much larger monopole. Is the base that it's on sufficient to handle the new one?
If it was all, if it was, if it was a tapered side like this one, I mean...
Correct. Okay, is there anyone on the, in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to suggest that we continue this matter.
Can I just add something? I'm sorry, I just want to say that I did apply for this as an eligible facility request.
A what?
Eligible facility request in two thousand and twelve, the federal government passed, um, sixty-four oh nine, which allows carriers to make these nonsubstantial changes to the tower, and that's what I applied for as here. I covered it in my cover letter.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So this is like a, a nonsubstantial change, and I know we're going back and forth...
I consider this a nonsubstantial change.
According to the federal government, it is.
Well, we'll have to take that under review, can you, if you have what the federal government defines nonsubstantial change as? We can check, we can look into that.
It also gives a timeline as well for approval. And I believe I applied for this permit in August. So I just want to make, make that known.
Yep.
Okay.
Would you find out, is that a by right?
It is a by right.
What do you say? Is this a by right? And if it's a federal, uh, statute or whatever and it's by right, we may not have much opportunity to deny.
We had the ability to demand or to require it to be a monopole previously. We may have the ability to do the same thing now, I don't know, we'll have to look into that.
I know, the, I mean, the, I did read the two thousand and two, and, and the purpose of the pole was to camouflage the antennas.
Right.
And that was the purpose, and it's remaining the purpose that the antennas are gonna remain on the inside so we're not changing the purpose of the pole.
Right, and then moving them to the outside, yeah.
Yeah, so I think the Board of Appeals decision is probably important to see how that's worded.
Right.
So if it's being consistent with that.
So we have more work to do.
You might even have to ask Tom Council.
Yes.
No, really?
We may.
If, yeah, if, if they have, if it's a by right and it's a federal law.
Well, we will find out.
So let's find out.
We will indeed, and even if it's by right, we may have the ability to make accommodations and aesthetic changes, so...
So you want a motion to continue this matter?
Please.
To the meeting, uh, to the Planning Board meeting of...
October sixteenth.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next up, we have item eight A, a public hearing, application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan, Seventeen Sears Street. Robert Murray is the applicant. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Thomas Murphy for the applicant. The application before you is a subdivision approval for a residential lot split from one lot to two. I've always looked at these as sort of a glorified A and R plan because, um, the two new plans, uh, the two new lots that were created by variance, uh, both have eighty-six feet of frontage and, which is less than a hundred feet of frontage required by a bylaw. So the way the statute's written, you have to submit this as a subdivision plan as opposed to an A and R plan. But for all intents and purposes, it's just creating an additional, um, residential lot at Seventeen Sears Street. It's currently about a thirty-two-thousand-square-foot, um, lot. It's going to be divided into two lots with between sixteen and seventeen thousand square feet each with eighty-six feet of frontage. Uh, we did receive variances from the Board of Appeals a couple of months ago.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there were some waivers, um, that were attached to the application that deal with, um, constructing a new street. Obviously, we're not constructing a new street here. Uh, Sears, Sears Street is a public way, um, it's a, it's a level lot, it's a level street. So it's a really pretty straightforward, um, subdivision, uh, application, in my mind, anyway. I'm obviously willing to answer any questions or address any concerns of the board. I do add, and I don't know what the, uh, the board's, um, plans are for this evening, um, but these properties are currently, uh, both under agreement. They cannot be sold until the subdivision plan is approved, the twenty-day appeal, appeal period runs and everything gets recorded, so, if it's at all possible to get a, a decision on this this evening, that would be great. If not, I understand that the board has its processes, um, we are looking to try to move this along.
Okay. Thank you. Staff?
Sure. Um, Attorney Murphy did a great job explaining kind of what this is. It is pretty much like an A and R in front of you, but the process with, um, less than legal frontage needs to go through the planning board. Can you go back to the floor? Um, so this is the most rectangular, flattest lot in Burlington I've ever seen in, in A and R. Since my time, so I don't have any issue with the lot, other, the, both lots are now sixteen thousand square feet. The frontage is eighty, eighty-eight and eighty-six, I think. One of the things that, um, did come up, just not a big deal, but the, around the neighborhood, the tree that you can see in this photo, the large flowering tree, um, right here, um, the subdivision rules and regulations do require two street trees and that we would recommend that, um, one of those be the, to try to do everything you can to preserve that tree right in the front of the site as it's a, it's a, it's a signature tree in the, the streetscape in the neighborhood.
Know what kind of tree it is?
I, I don't know. It's that one right there.
The big, pretty one.
Um, so, and also the, um, that the...
Tom, they changed the angle, you can see it better now.
That the property, um, the property owner has really kept up extensive landscaping in front of the site and, um, the neighborhood just, I would like to see that as continued as much as possible or at least disturbed. Otherwise, you have a lot of conditions, but with a subdivision, you have a lot of conditions, um, and there's a long list of waivers. The waivers all have to do, um, with, um, utili, you know, util, roadway, infrastructure and utilities that are not being built, and that's about it, other than the addition of the, the tree. We do want to make sure we have all the, um, variance language within the plan and that the plan states that this is for one lot and one lot only, and that's about it. So other than that, we're, we recommend favorably.
Thank you, Kristen. Paul, would you like to start?
I, was this the house that was recently sold on Sears Street?
Yes.
Uh, yes, it...
Okay, no, that's all I want to know, because it could have been a lot worse, I mean, when you consider, you know...
You're right.
What, no, really, I mean, no, it was kind of scary when you think of it.
This whole thing was in response to what happened when it was almost sold before, so...
Yes, okay, no, I'm sure it's gonna be a beautiful house that's gonna be built there. Somebody's not gonna, uh, build a house like mine.
I think your house is lovely.
Yeah, it is. I mean, we wouldn't move anywhere else, but I mean, the new houses that are in our neighborhood are gonna be what this is gonna look like. No, that was the only question I had, really.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Very happy with what's happened on this piece of property in town. I know that the neighbors are very concerned about the alternative that could happen, so I have no issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am chair.
Phil?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Uh, just a, a question to the staff. Did we get a bite at this, uh, before we went to the Board of Appeals? Like we know we try to comment on lot splits and variances with that type of thing?
Um...
I don't remember this one.
I don't remember, we, I don't, I don't remember if it's...
Thank you, ma'am chair.
Is that it, Phil?
Uh, just one quick thing, Tom. Uh, I assume, and I know we don't have anything to say aye and nay about it, but the existing house in the existing building Chicken Coop back there, is that gonna stay? Yeah. Have you talked with historical commission and that kind of thing?
The, the project was specifically designed so the existing house in, in the Chicken Coop shred area will, will stay. It's actually under agreement now, somebody's gonna buy it as is and use it as a household. It was nice they were able to save the house because that obviously would have gone away, alternative on the...
Thank you.
Um, well, Ernie asked my question. I'm so pleased that the house in Chicken Coop are staying, they're beautiful, um, so please save the tree too. That's my only comment.
Down.
Okay, thank you.
The old tree in the front.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this matter? Seeing no one, let's move on.
You want a motion?
Yes, please.
I make a motion pursuant to section, uh, two-point-four of the Planning Board subdivision rules and regulations. The Planning Board hereby finds the definitive subdivision plan application submitted by Robert W. Murray for the creation of one additional building lot for total two single-family dwelling lots on Sears Street to be a complete and proper submission.
Second.
You can, you can do this one first and then go back.
Okay, okay.
What did I miss?
Oh, okay, I was on the, on the wrong page, so, was, it was moved and seconded?
Yep.
Yes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Five-zero.
Now go back, back one page.
I make a, a motion to approve the definitive subdivision plan entitled, Plan of Land Seventeen Sears Street, Burlington, Massachusetts, submitted by Robert W. Murray on August twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. Said plan prepared by Commonwealth Engineering dated May twenty-second, twenty nineteen, consisting of one sheet to be revised as conditioned herein reflecting the creation of one additional building lot for a total of two single-family dwelling lots, subject to the following terms, revisions and conditions.
Okay, you have to table that one because you have to do waivers before that one.
Okay, so on page five?
I got it.
Okay.
Madam Chair, pursuant to section two-point-five of the Planning Board Rules and Regulations governing the subdivision of land in pursuant to MGL Chapter Forty-one, Section eighty-one dash R, the Plan Boy, Planning Board hereby considers the following waivers requested by the applicant from the subdivision rules and regulations, including a waiver of full subdivision frontage proposed lot one and two for the plan entitled, Plan of Land Seventeen Sears Street, Burlington, Massachusetts, submitted by Robert W. Murray on August twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. Said plan prepared by Commonwealth Engineering dated May twenty-second, twenty nineteen, consisting of one sheet.
Do we have to read all the waivers?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Five-zero, and now let's move on to Paul's second motion. And I believe Paul made the motion, was it seconded? Thank you, Ernie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, next we have, um... Next, we have item eight B, a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section one point seven point fifteen, antennas other than satellite dish antennas for the purpose of private reception of telecommunications signals, which antennas do not exceed twelve feet in height above the ground or twelve feet above the roof of a building on which they are mounted. Of the Northwest Park Plan Development District zoning bylaw, fifty-three Third Avenue, Salco Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless is the applicant. Hello, welcome. Please state your names for the record.
Elizabeth Fallon with Structure Consulting Group.
Earl Garry on behalf of Verizon Wireless. Madam Chair, I notice we're down one member.
Yes.
Vice Chair, does the town subscribe to the so-called Mullen Rule?
We do.
Yes. So what I propose then this evening is that I'm going to have some material I'd like to pass out. I'd like to quickly go through it, but then we'd respectfully ask for a continuance until the vice chair is present.
Understood.
And he could watch the film on tonight to, so I don't have to rehash everything that... Is that okay?
It's certainly fine with us if that's what you'd prefer.
Thank you.
We'll tell him what you said.
He can watch on TV later.
He'll have to.
Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. We can take one for Jack as well.
Yeah, just put it right here?
Yes. Not Jack, sorry, Joe.
Now, it looks like there's more than, these are, it looks like a lot of material I'm laying on you, but it's mostly photographs. Thank you. A picture's worth a thousand dollars. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is this included in the package that you passed out or is this extra, what you had submitted?
They're new, they're new.
Oh, well, they may be due. Did you submit them?
I printed those out.
Okay, then there's due, you have a lot of...
Okay, great.
Okay.
Why the Mary? I put it in the order that, if I could, if I could, Madam Chair and members of the board, please have the floor, allow me to have the floor uninterrupted, because what I'm going to do is quickly run through this.
Sure.
And as soon as I start explaining stuff, it's going to open up questions.
We'll hold our questions till the end.
And if we have to stop each time, we're never going to get through it. We have a lot of people waiting.
We can hold our questions.
So what I've submitted here, the cover sheet, self-explanatory, the first tab is simply a recap. It was already submitted with prior application, but I've gone through all the various elements of the wireless bylaw, and a lot of it's not applicable, not applicable, not applicable, because we're not proposing a tower. But I do want to hone in on two provisions. On page seven, I just want to point out on page seven, section eight point four point four B, and this is under design criteria, that antennas attached to a structure shall be screened or camouflaged so as to minimize, and I've added that emphasis, minimize visibility from budding streets and residences. So in our, it's our position that we have done that. Not only do we minimize, we've actually hidden the antenna inside the structure, so we've eliminated the view of the antenna completely. But that's the only design criteria of the bylaw. The bylaw does not go on to say, by way of example, this is acceptable, that's not acceptable, which I've seen in other bylaws. So I'm merely pointing out, you know your own bylaw because you wrote it, but I'm pointing out that we, as an applicant, have to deal with what we've, what we're dealt with in terms of the town bylaw, and that's the design criteria. The other section is on page twelve of my statement, under approval criteria, section eight point four point six C, these are part of your findings, is whether the proposed facility employs available stealth techniques or is otherwise camouflaged to the extent possible in order to minimize the visual impact. And we submit that we have done that as well. We have minimized, we are using stealth techniques. And again, it does not go on to elaborate by way of example, these are acceptable, these are not. Here's some examples that we'd like to see. So we're left with those words, plain English meaning, which in the wireless industry, stealth has certain meanings and so forth, which I'm going to get into with these pictures. Then on page thirteen, because we have applied for a special permit, I just wanted to very quickly, I'm not going to read this to you, but I just wanted to quickly highlight it, that on section nine point two, the special permit requirements, a criteria for approval, one, social, economic, community needs, and we were proposing enhanced wireless service facilities, which is good for public safety, good for the convenience. I mean, who other than Mr. Raymond doesn't have a cellphone today? Number two, traffic flow and safety is a non-issue. This is an unmanned, unoccupied, remotely monitored wireless installation. There are no employees, visitors or guests. There's no influence at all on traffic flow and safety. Number three, adequacy of utilities. We use no water, no sewer. Electricity and telephone on-site are adequate. Neighborhood character, we're not changing at all. It's going on the roof of a commercial building. Impacts on the natural environment, none. We're going up on the roof. We're not touching anything on the ground. And number five, potential fiscal impact, we have no impact whatsoever. We don't put anyone in the school system. We have no, we don't need any town services. I mean, I like to call this use more of a non-use in the conventional sense, in the sense that once it's built, nothing happens up there. It's a utility, basically. Now, the other statement I put in there is for you to consider that when I wrote that and I saw that now that we've moved the antennas to lower their height to be fully compliant with the bylaw, there's a provision in your bylaw, and again, this is your bylaw that you wrote. I have not run this by Mr. Ungerson, but I submit to you as the authors of the bylaw that we, there's a possibility, this could be considered a by right installation in the sense that now that we're compliant with the height, the Plan Development District has a provision that the Plan Development District shall not, again, emphasis added, have the effect of changing or negating the wireless overlay, and the wireless overlay shall remain applicable, notwithstanding anything to the contrary, emphasis added. And in the wireless overlay, there's a provision under eight point four point three C that building facade-mounted facilities, we're not doing that, and building rooftop facilities, we are doing that, which are more than two hundred feet in the facility, not the property, the facility, more than two hundred feet from a property occupied by a residence, which we are, more than two hundred feet, shall be permitted by right in the overlay district. Now, I'm not, as I mentioned to the planner when we discussed this, I'm not trying to throw a wrench in our process. I'm just trying to offer another path for approval. We simply want to get on air and get approved. So that's something for consideration. And you, as authors of the bylaw, and I know that you sometimes get grief from members of the community that you uphold the bylaw. That's what you do. Okay, well, you wrote this. There's also a generally accepted legal principle that ambiguity in a written document is held against the drafter. You folks wrote that. I am interpreting it that way, okay? Tell me I'm wrong. But either way, special permit, we meet the criteria of nine point two, or by right, it's two different paths for an approval. Then I want to get into these photos. Now, those pages are numbered. The other pages, tabs two and three are not numbered, but a way to refer to these when we're having discussions would be, for example, page, tab two, page, page three, or tab three, page one, or whatever, so we can get, refer to them that way. But actually, first, I just remembered, before I even get into all that, I wanted to very quickly address some questions that were raised by the board last week, because I always, if I say I'm going to get back to you, I always do, so I apologize. I should have done this before I even got into that. So we'll get to the pictures next. Is, I was asked, how, how does the building, how does coverage get into the building? And then what is the broadcast pattern of the antennas? Those sort of tie together. And so I correct myself from what I said last time, is that the broad, first, the broadcast pattern's kind of a complicated question, because every antenna has a different broadcast pattern, and the antennas we're using are multifunctional, in the sense we have multiple licenses broadcasting through the same antenna, and every frequency has a different broadcast pattern. But the gist of it is, the bulk of the signal is out, but some peripheral signal does go down into the building, so that's how we get coverage in the building. But it's much lower and it's well below what's registered outside. So when I submitted that report, and I prefaced the submission of that report last week as not waiving any error rights under federal law, we submit this as evidence to the board and members of the public that we're compliant. And the question came up, well, what about in the building? So we asked the RF engineers about that. They explained, yeah, I guess the analogy, he said, is say I have a flashlight, and I'm pointing it at all of you, if it was pitch black in here and I turned this flashlight heading at you, there would still be enough sort of ambient light around here that I could still read my document down here, but it's very weak. The main focus is out there. So it's similar to an antenna. These antennas are up on the roof broadcasting out, but there's enough peripheral RF going down through the building attenuated by the roof that you could still make phone calls and so forth, but it's way below, it's much lower below the levels out in the street. So I wanted to address that. And the other question was, other form, show others of other forms of stealth and so forth. That ties into what I provided here. Now, before, and then there was terminology, I was saying, what about facade mount? What about ballast? And people were saying, what are you talking about? So I brought this little model here, just so we're all on the same page as far as the terminology, because Ms. Fallon and I, you know, we throw, people in our industry, we throw these things around, and then we forget. People don't necessarily know what we're talking about, and it's not fair. So I brought this desk pen. You've all seen these. I epoxied this in place and then spray painted it gray. This is an example of a ballast mount. So a ballast is simply, it's a, it's a pole, a staff, that's then counterweighted, okay? And we're proposing single ballast mounts, but there are instances where there are four ballasts, four antennas in a row. Like I mentioned, the typical cellphone tower antennas have four antennas, four antennas, four antennas. You'll see sometimes four in ballasts where they just, there are four of these, in which case the frames are all interconnected. The point of this is to prevent, to prevent it from tipping over, because the, our landlord, Wegmans, it doesn't want us to penetrate and drill into and affect, fix to the roof. And that's very common in our industry. Very few landlords will allow you to go up there and start drilling holes in the roof. So the ballast is a very typical installation, but you don't see any of this from the ground. So the issue then with the ballast is if you start getting too complicated, too big, the wind loading is such that now you need more weight or you need a bigger footprint. So for example, this, what we're proposing is something, you know, just very simple like this, you know? If you, and you can see, and the engineers have calculated, they've gone up and done structural, and they've said, okay, the Wegmans roof can support that for that wind loading. If you start making it, you know, some big thing, then it's like, nah, you know, no, it won't. And so, because now you have to add more weight or make this a bigger thing to keep it from tipping over in a high wind. And at a certain point, it'll fail. I had a site on another, in a property in Connecticut where it was exactly, exactly like that. We were proposing exposed ballast. And when I got the file, I said, why didn't we stealth these? And they said, because it would fail structural. It doesn't mean that things, the roofs are on the verge of collapsing, you know, they all built, all the engineers built in all these safety factors for snow load and all that. But the point in that one was, this is fine, but you start, you know, doing this or this to it, and it's not fine. There'd be so much additional weight on here, it wouldn't, it wouldn't pass. So in our president's, our present case, we have gotten an okay from the structural engineer to do a structure like that, or a structure that's, you know, a square, you know, it's very simple, and it's a, it's a single ballast, it's not multiple ones. So that's the terminology on a ballast. The other thing I wanted to ask respectfully to all the board is, when you're reviewing all these, now, I'm going to go through these pictures, and I'm a wireless guy, so I'm going to think they're all beautiful, you know? This is, this is something we all have to keep in mind. We all wear two hats. We have the hat of our human nature, where we have our tat, hat of what is considered tasteful, what's considered aesthetic, and that's highly personal. If one of you said, if I held this piece of paper and said, this is blue, and what do you think? If someone said, I don't like blue at all, or I don't like that shade blue, I like it lighter, I like it darker, you're not going to get an argument out of me. That's highly personal. I have no business telling you your taste is wrong. That's completely personal. However, for what we're doing here, what I respectfully ask is that you check, take off your personal taste hat and put on your bylaw compliance hat, so that it's not, would you want what we're proposing on a building that you own, but does it comply with the bylaw? That's, that's what I respectfully ask, and that can be hard to do, but I know you can do it, because you uphold your bylaw. So under the next tab then, are examples. Now, I'm not saying these are, again, the tasteful hat, you may not like them, but compliance-wise, in the, in the communities where these are approved, they, they fly, they flew. So under tab two are installations in other communities. The first one is a picture of a stealth chimney. You might want to, you know, what do those things look like? The second one is another stealth chimney. It's masonry. I don't have any firsthand knowledge of these particular ones. The engineer sent us this, it's somewhere in the north of New Hampshire, but that's an example of how good this fake look, this faux look can get these days. The next one...
You're not going to have to do that one.
I'm sorry, sir?
You're not going to have to do that one, the chimneys.
The, well, the next picture is one...
Say what?
I'll hold that comment, because I'm not sure that's the case, so...
The next picture is, is one I do have personal knowledge of. This is on the roof of Saint Regis College in Weston, and those are, those tinted green, you know, you see all the tinted green things up there. Well, the two taller ones that are, that look like stacks, a little picture of, those are actually faux antenna stacks. The next one, I don't have personal knowledge of, but this is, the far view, you know, is to show you from the street. You can't really see what's going on, but then you zoomed in, and these are stacked, these are an example of what I was talking about, where it's a faux stack, but they have three of them. One of them happens to have the sheathing removed. They must have been doing work on it that day or something, but the other two are still sheathed. So those are examples of, of faux stacks or ballast. The, the next picture is another one of the same thing, of sort of a ballast. And then the next tab are pictures of installations in Burlington. Now, these aren't all the installations in Burlington. These are just some random ones that Ms. Fallon took pictures of that, again, are compliant with your bylaw, because your bylaw allows this. The first one is what we call facade mount, where you'll see the antennas up in that penthouse, and they were painted to, they're flush mounted to it and then painted to match. That's allowed under the bylaw. It's called facade mounting. In our particular instance, Wegmans does not want facade. That was one of the first things they suggested, hey, what about facade? Because that's by right. No, they don't want that. They're very particular about their, the look of their building, and rightly so. I think they're very attractive buildings. The next one is an example of ballast, look to be exposed, although I can't tell, I mean, so they may be, they may have canisters over there, but I can't tell, but it's the four, four antennas, not the single one like we're proposing. The next photo is one of faux chimneys, okay? Antennas are hidden in there. And again, I don't know whose installations these are, I don't know what carriers these are. The point is, I'm just showing you examples so we have the terminology down. Ballast, facade mount, faux. And then the next one is a view of the same building where it shows it has faux chimneys and facade mount, both of which are allowed under your bylaw, so they're fully compliant. And then the next one, back to some facade and then some exposed ballast, and then a zoom in on the facade. So that, I wanted to get that down, because I remember I mentioned last week or two weeks ago about facade, and there was a question, well, what are you, what are you talking about? That's the terminology. So now under, and those are, those pages that I mentioned are numbered, but you can refer to them as, you know, tab three, page two, or whatever. Now, under the fourth tab are the pictures of the Wegmans subject property. Those are numbered in the sense that there are different views, view one A, one B...
Are these the ones that you're proposing?
No, so I'm going to qualify this. These are ones that we would like to propose. I, I don't have the other-
Can you get to where you're, what you're proposing?
Well, what we have on the table right now is what we submitted last time, which are these faux canisters. What we're working with our landlord now is to see if they will allow us to do some of these other designs. They have not, they, the only two that they've approved, the only one they've approved is the faux canister, the only one they've completely vetoed is the faux cupola. With all due respect, Madam Chair, I have personally done cupolas, I think they're beautiful in certain instances. Wegmans has a very particular look, and that's why I passed this out. If you look at this southern elevation-
Did that just happen today?
Yeah, it happened this evening, so let-
Okay, all right.
The, um, and then under tab five, before we go back to these pictures, because that, that may take a little bit, under tab five are the C1 and C2 drawings that we, where we have shown our moving of that B sector to the new location, and lowering it, so it's now fully compliant with the bylaw, which again ties into my statement that this could then be a by right application. Okay, but, so that, that's all, and then, if, once we've, once this is approved and finalized, any other changes will then be incorporated into a revised set of plans, fully stamped and submitted. So rather than piecemeal that over time, we're submitting just the C1 and C2 right now, to show you, hey, we moved that B sector, we lowered its height, it's fully compliant now. Anything else that comes out of our discussions or approval that may necessitate further changes, we will, of course, submit a final revised set of plans at that, at the appropriate time. But going back to tab three, there are three, the three sectors again, A, B, and C, A, B, and G. None of these three can be seen from the same location at the same time. Wegmans, if you look at this elevation, this is, this is not in the pack, that's why I passed this out. I thought about this at the last minute. This is a view where you're coming up, you're going northbound on Second Avenue, or approaching the Rotary, and you can see Wegmans in the distance. That is their elevation. That is, now, I'm putting my personal taste hat on, in my opinion, that's a really attractive looking building. And it's not just in Burlington, this is Wegmans trademark on all their sites. They do really nice work, and they have design people that are really critical about how their buildings look, and they don't want, that's why it's hard for, they don't want us messing with that, and rightly so. This building is 400, over 400 feet from the west to the east, and, and from north-south, it's over 200 feet. This is an enormous building, it's, you know, city blocks. What we're proposing, the reason I showed you this is that is what, to me, what makes, and I'm putting my personal taste hat on, what makes an interesting looking building from architectural roofline, a complicated roofs, eaves, dormers, gables, and so forth, and that says it all. It's a very interesting looking structure. All the way over the far left is where we're proposing that G sector, which is a little can, a little canister that you're not going to even see. But that's, that, that, this is why we're having, I'm between you as the permitting board and my landlord, because we don't own this building. I can't just agree to something without their permission. So we're suggesting, and what we've thrown out there, are other forms of stealth in compliance with the bylaw, because the bylaw is not specific on examples of what should be permitted or not, just says stealth, camouflage, hidden. We feel all of these are, including the very first one we proposed. And the reason that Wegmans approved that is they don't want people messing with this beautiful design. They want it to be as unobtrusive as possible. The purpose of stealth is not to draw your eye to it, not to make it pretty, it's something that you don't even notice. There are studies, I can't cite the study, but I've heard of architects and people citing presentations where, there are human studies where when you get out of the car, and you're parking, and you're walking to a site, the average person does not look, stand around looking up at roofs, you know, they, they look, maybe they look at the fascia above a store to make sure they're going into the correct store, and then in and so forth. We want to design something that's not going to draw your attention up to make it, to make it visible. And none of these three will be seen from any one particular spot. What Wegmans told me is they have stacks on their roof now, they have vents. Every building that has plumbing has a vent on the roof somewhere. Every building has a kitchen, so forth, has a vent on the roof. So that is what, why they approved the original stack. Well, what we're suggesting we'll, we can try to see if they'd be interested in are these, the, the other two options are the chimney, which is a squared-off version, that would then be treated, it would not be a masonry chimney like that one under tab two-
Can I just stop you for just a minute? Am I correct in understanding that you don't have a different proposal tonight because you need to wait and hear back from Wegmans?
We are, the proposal we have now is for the, the, what we originally proposed, which is the canisters, because that is, that is all Wegmans officially signed off on.
So they have not signed off on the canisters with the concealing film-
They want more information on that, and so let me explain that. Under the very back of tab three, the last three pages are this 3M concealment film. It's a new product. I personally don't have experience with this, but what I've been told is, is a new product that's, you can wrap a, a structure like this with it, and that it takes on the color of the, whatever the color of the sky is that day. So, for example, it's a blue-sky day, it looks bluish. If it's a gray day, it looks grayish. It doesn't reflect, so to say reflective is a bad term probably, because it would, that would imply that you're down on the ground, and it's going to reflect the sun in your eyes. It doesn't reflect like that. It absorbs the light of the sky, and it reflects back or shines back what that might look like, and that brochure describes that. And our landlord is contrived by that, but has not officially said, "Yeah, we're going to go with that." And that's, that's why, seeing that the vice chair absent, the fact that we don't have this completely fleshed out with our landlord, I wanted to make this presentation, orient you to this package, so you can all look, study this, and then we could reconvene. But I also wanted to make the point that, in our opinion, what we are proposing is compliant with the bylaw, because the bylaw does not get into specifics-
I think you made that, I think you made that clear.
And then there's another point I want to make, with all due respect, that under, we're in the wireless overlay district, we are also under this whole, the whole town and the whole country is under this federal overlay of the Federal Telecommunications Act, and there's a provision under 47 U.S.C. 332(c)(7)(B) that prohibits towns from discriminating among carriers of functionally equivalent services. And what we are proposing-
Thank you. Can I just ask a question?
Is not any different than, not any less obtrusive than what other carriers-
I understand. I think you've made that clear. Can I ask a question regarding, under tab four, page five of 16, is that picture representing a stack that would have-
The photo, Madam Chair, photo two D or three EA, or what photo?
I'm looking at page five of 16, under, under tab four. So it is-
No, what, what photo view?
Photo one C.
One C?
Is that picture showing a stack with the 3M-
Yes, it does.
Thing that looks like that, okay.
The little call-out there describes-
So that's what you are waiting to hear back from Wegmans on, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so basically, the order of these is the original. First is, it's as it is now with nothing. That's called the actual view. So that's the, the A view of all these. The next view, the B view, is the original one we proposed, which is just a stack with a little cap on it. The C view is the same thing with the concealment film. The D view is the faux chimney. And then there's only one, the, um, the, uh, the fourth view, the three E had this cupola, which we took the lead from the chair and suggested the engineers draw that up, and that was the one, that's the only one that Wegmans vetoed, and the only ones they approved was the original. So the other two are, you know, kind of waiting in the wings. But what I'd like the board to consider is how are we not compliant with our first proposal?
Well, actually, what you've liked, what, what you've said is that you don't want the board to do a lot of consideration tonight at all, because we're missed, we're down a member. And what you're telling us is that you're waiting to hear back from Wegmans as to what you can actually propose. So I'm not sure if it makes a whole lot of sense for us to react to-
I would like, I would like to poll the board while they're all here, the members that are here, on your feelings on this. Is this-
Feelings on what?
I'm sorry?
There are feelings on the, what you're proposing, or-
Madam Chair, it's very clear that you wanted the cupola. I'm sorry that our landlord vetoed-
No, I'm not asking about the cupola. I don't know, please, let me finish. I don't know if you're asking to poll the board about these pictures you're presenting, or about your argument about this being by right. That's what I'm asking. What is it you want to poll the board on?
Compliance with the bylaw.
Okay. I don't think we're prepared to be polled on that tonight. I think we need to look into it more.
Okay.
Okay. So, do any members have any questions, or, yes, Bill?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll ask the applicant, are there any facilities now that have the 3M concealed film today?
I don't have any, I'm sorry. That's why it's, it's new to me, too. I'm trying to be cutting-edge and creative here, but I, I don't have anything to show you on that regard.
So there's nowhere locally or nationally that would have this stuff?
It's you, not that on a, on a site like this, on a rooftop site like this.
Is it, is it anywhere, anywhere?
Yes.
Rooftop or anywhere that you know of?
It's been, it has been used on telephone pole attachments.
Can you give us an address of that? Can you tell us where that might be?
It doesn't have to be now, you could send it to staff.
Send it to us, yeah. Anyway, you got that, because what I would do, otherwise, if you don't come up with it, I'll call 3M and I'll have to find out. So if you can do that, that'd be great. Otherwise, we keep on going on that. The other question I have is, Wegmans has other facilities in the United States. Is there any other Wegmans that has antennas on their roof?
I don't know that either.
Okay, and if they do, can we take a look at what they are made of and what they look like?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Did, Ernie, did you have any questions? Mike, for now? No?
Madam Chair.
Anything tonight, since we can't really, we don't know what you're proposing, so we can't really make a decision?
I don't usually look at the roof of a building and say, gee, it's an ugly building, what's that stick, you know? I look at the facade to see what it is and so forth. So I'm, I'm, I'm enjoying the going back and forth, but I have no investment in it, really. I do want to know, though, if Bill says chimneys are out.
I don't say anything like that.
No, he didn't say that. No.
So you said something, "We're in, you're not going, you're not going to be getting that." And I said, "Let's just wait for the end of that." So I don't think anything's-
That was my only opinion, and I agree with you. It was inappropriate.
I think everything's in, to be honest with you. You know, I mean, I think, I heard the applicant say that the cupolas are out. But, um, you know, because if Wegmans said they were, maybe get that in writing or something, or we communicate to Wegmans, say, "The planning board prefers the cupolas."
Right, we can certainly do that, but I think for tonight-
Right.
We don't actually know what the applicant is proposing exactly, because you need to wait back to hear back from Wegmans. We are down one member. So I appreciate all the information you've provided, and we're going, there's a lot here to absorb, so there's no way we can actually react to it tonight. This is a lot. So I think we are probably best continuing till our next meeting. Okay?
Motion made to continue to planning board meeting of October 16th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, five zero. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I want to thank you for all the effort that you've put in doing all of this.
Thank you. Next, we have item 8C, a public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, 175 Bedford Street. 175 Bedford Street LLC is the applicant. Hello, welcome, and please state your names for the record. Thank you.
Kenneth Jong, 175 Bedford Street LLC. Thank you.
Christopher Jong, president of Mac Designer Hardware, the tenant, 2B of 175 Bedford Street, co-owners.
So you're the owners, and you'll be operating the business as well?
Correct. He is the trustee of the 175 Bedford Street LLC.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Mike Rizzo, and I'm based on engineering. I'm here on behalf.
Okay, thank you.
We have, um, updated information.
Oh.
You can. This plan reflects comments that were received from conservation and other departments, and they've been incorporated. But this is a technical memorandum that includes responses to all the comments, that puts us-
Thank you.
-informed with those.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
As you can see, this-
I see you've addressed all of the department comments. We are required to read them into the record, so before we have you address them, we should probably read them into the record, and then, is that okay? Sound good? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Building departments, approval with the following recommendations. One, application-
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, so let's, I, catch me a little golf cart here. What, what's actually going on? Are we completely-
Yeah, you're right. We kind of, you're right, Bo. Let's take a step back.
Catch up here, things-
Before we go through this memo, why don't we take a step back, and you can tell us what you're proposing for the site?
Okay.
Thank you.
So the property is located at 175 Bedford Street in Burlington. As you can see, the building is a two-story, unoccupied building currently. It's bordered easterly by the mobile gas station, westerly by a auto repair shop, and southerly by the Vine Park. The, the owners plan to re-purpose the building, the two-story building. It would be first-floor hardware showroom, second floor, all-purpose rental property. And also part of the project is to, the existing site is pretty much all paved. It's 55% impervious surface, 45% pervious. We've been working, clients here have been working very closely with the departments in the city, conservation, fire department, public works, we've accommodated everything they've asked for. So the plan to the site would be to repave the, the site, but as part of that, working with the Conservation Commission, is, in this lower corner here, there'll be infiltration basin. So all that pavement's removed, infiltration basin here. On the westerly side of the building, there'll be a swale, vegetated swale with two check dams here.
I'm sorry, on which side of the building? I don't think that was working. I couldn't tell where you were pointing.
The western side of the building.
Okay, so that's-
Long alleyway on the side there.
On the right side, if I was looking at it from the street.
If you're looking from the street, the right side, correct. Between the automotive dealer and the-
Okay, thank you.
The infiltration basin to the back here will have a check dam there. This is where the water will be collected. There's an overflow at this point here that would get to the brook. On this part of the property down here, there'll be two landscape areas where the pavement's been removed. There'll be plantings here and here. Then, there'll be new parking provided on the site. So using the town bylaws, nine-by-18 parking spaces, we were able to fit 28 parking spaces, the site, in the best, the greatest extent practicable. We've got 28 spaces on this site, keeping in mind that working closely with the Conservation Commission, and providing compensatory recharge of the stormwater, naturally, we lost ability to put more parking spots in. The drainage does run from Bedford Street, flows across the site, and goes through the brook untreated. This site, the entire site will be treated. The water will be, the elevations will be the same, just minor grading to direct the runoff to the, to the infiltration basins. The roof runoff will be collected in a gutter and through roof conduits, transferred over to the swale on the left side or the westerly side of the building, and subsequently get into the treatment area. So in, in laying out the parking, we put, we've got as many spots as we can get. We can only get 28 spots. And looking at the town's bylaw, there's like two categories that this site kind of falls under. There would be retail and office. So the retail space above would be-
Retail spaces above?
Sorry, the office space above would generate a required 16 parking spaces. The office, the retail spot, which would be low, which is really a showroom, hardware showroom, by the bylaw requires 20, almost 26 spaces, 25.8 spaces. We find that's grossly escalated. We don't really feel we need that kind of space. We've conducted some investigation, and we consulted, we consulted with the ITE Parking Generation Manual for similar-type uses, such as paint store, furniture store, or hardware store. And those average parking rates fall between four and six spaces, which is drastically different than 28 spaces.
Can you explain the nature of your business a little bit? Because this is not a traditional hardware store. I think when people hear hardware, they might think of Ace Hardware, and that's not what you're talking about.
Correct, absolutely. So our, our business is high-end decorative hardware. So doorknobs, hinges for doors, cabinet ops for kitchens, remodels, or, or that type of thing, bath hardware, toilet paper holders. But it's all decorative in nature. It's not, you're like, you're buying screws, or plywood, or anything of the sorts. So we are a showroom. We have very little inventory. It's almost all special order, so it is purely a showroom, for the most part.
So are you generally selling to individuals, or to contractors, or?
Combination. Architects, designers is kind of one category that I, that I, that I deal with. Most of that business is done through film. Contractors also is another category that will like to come in to pick up when a special order comes in. That would be another category, and then homeowners would be the other category that are coming in to browse, to select for their contractor to come and pick it up.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure people understood that, because something like a traditional hardware store would generate much more traffic and have much higher parking needs than what you're proposing.
Yeah, at any given time, we may have maybe five parties as customers in the store at any given time. I would not say any more than that. That's, I think, in line with the four to six parking spaces from that parking manual.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So in, in thinking about, in that, in that discussion, you know, six spaces plus 16 would be 22 spaces that would be, that would be needed. We're providing 28. So the board, I know the bylaw says we're supposed to have 25.6 spaces, but perhaps the board can take that into consideration and recognize that the use of the building for that particular business would only generate probably six spaces, and considering that we have 28, that you might look favorably and provide and issue a waiver for the difference in parking.
Okay, did you have anything else you wanted to cover about this first?
It kind of covers it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I just had a couple of words, just a little bit more context around the whole situation. So we are an existing business in Burlington, currently located in Northwest Park, 164 Middle 6 Turnpike. It is very close to the Wegmans. We've been there for about three and a half years, and we're just basically moving down the road now. We are actually way past of our lease with Norbloom Management, which was up at the end of June. So I know we've been trying to get this expedited as much as possible. We've been working very closely with the Planning Department, Conservation Commission. We've been there a couple times, and my understanding is, they've, they are prepared to issue the order of conditions next week pending the approval of this board today, if that's what I guess. So the expediency of the board would be very much appreciated. I'm not sure how much longer our landlord will allow us to stay in our current location.
I understand. Thank you. I understand, thank you. Steph, did you want to weigh in?
Sure. This building, actually, Members Bayo asked me today, he said, "What's the vacancy rate in Burlington?" And I said, "Well, the vacancy rate for buildings that are easily used is extremely low." But there are buildings in town that, like this building, that have just been difficult. They have a low parking amount. The building is too big for the site for most modern uses. So it's nice when we see a use like this, like a showroom use. We've also seen, not having to do with this, but some of the older industrial buildings for music and dance and performing arts and other things like that. So those... And I think this is, again, for this building that was built, I think, as an office building. Some of you might remember what it was.
I think it used to be Opticon Technology. It was like a manufacturing of lenses, I think.
Yeah, it's an interesting building, as I'm sure there you guys are figuring out. But anyway, it's just kind of been sitting there for a long time. We've had a couple of different proposals come in, and it just didn't really work. But for this, Conservation, it's right up on... It's lapping on the riverbank right here. So that was... It's critical that Conservation review the site. In speaking with Conservation at our department review meeting, they had mentioned that they'd seen this twice, and they are very ready to approve the site, but they wanted to make sure that this board wasn't going to make any additional changes that they would have to consider as part of their application. Where was I going? So for this site, it is very much underparked for traditional uses like retail and office. However, with this showroom-type space, we're very encouraged. It's about 65, a little more than 6,500 square feet per floor. For other showroom-type places, I know we just permitted Ferguson a couple of years ago. If you ever drive by Ferguson, there's, what, five cars in the parking lot?
Maybe.
So, and I know they're not exactly like that use, but just in terms of kind of that showroom use, I don't think that it's a huge parking demand. What would be helpful, we're not recommending action tonight. We're opening. We do have to digest some of this new information. I don't think it's going to... I mean, I think we probably can get there at our next meeting, but do have to digest that information. But for that next meeting, you guys have been open in Northwest Park for a couple of years. If you have any information that you can convey to us, and I know, I assume in this more visible location, you hope to increase foot traffic, but if you can give us an indication of kind of just on average per day, per week, how many people are there, how much parking space, how many parking spaces are used where you are now? It'll give us a little bit more comfort just in moving forward that you are the type of use we're thinking of. It is a low demand, and that we can just make that finding that it is okay for this use to move in. I do have some concerns, not in the immediacy, but in whoever you rent upstairs to, and what type of tenant that is, and the parking demand there. So we may condition it that whomever comes back, we do have to review their parking utilization at some point before they move in, so just keep that in mind. And I'm sure you as well don't want to overburden your site and your parking constraints. So with that, you know, we want to increase green space as much as possible. It's a super tight site to navigate. I think they've done a good job along the back corner of the building, adding the swale. The front of the site, can you go to the photo? The front of the site is heavily paved. If there's... There is a small strip of grass, non-pavement, right up at the building. A really small, I mean, it's probably, your shoe's probably wider than it. But if there's any opportunities to do additional height plantings in that location, that would enhance the building. As well as, it looks like on this new plan, when I look quickly, you're proposing a more enhanced platform at the door, the front door with...
Oh, in the back?
I don't know, in the front. Is it on the back I was looking at?
I don't believe we're changing anything in the front. The loading dock is going to be moved from one side of the building to the other side of the building.
Okay, because it says proposed entry ramp slope, so I assumed you were doing a little bit wider on the side there. So anyway, we'll take a look at the plan, but we just wanted to enhance, wanted to recommend any enhancements to landscaping as well as just the navigation to that front door, making sure people understand where it is from the street and if there's any way to highlight that. And then I think the landscape bed on this side of you is part of the gas station, but if there's any opportunities there. But with that, I... We have to digest this plan a little bit more.
So the only changes to the plan would have been the grading for the Conservation Commission to increase the infiltration into that gully on the side, as well as there was a proposed change of a T at the water main entrance and changing it to a tapping, sleeving gate. So those are really the only changes to this plan from what was originally submitted.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Bernie, do you have questions?
No, not really. I mean, for the use you're proposing, I think it would work, but as Kristin said, if we grant a parking waiver, we'd want to be able to review whoever you got for tenant on the second floor. But other than that, it would be good to see an old, unused building reused, for sure. And I'm glad to see you're so successful that you're able to do it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So yeah, I finally, after you started three quarters way talking, I understood that you're not going to raise the building, because I was looking here at the site on the right, which I thought was the new building, and the one that's going to be raised. But you're actually keeping the existing building. And I think, so my concerns, I think, like a member Covina, would be about that second floor tenant and the spaces needed just for the tenant up there, if you're talking square footage and what's going to be up there. Another concern I have is that frontage, if you're thinking of putting this particular curb spot, which maybe that's where we're talking about putting some, you know, some vegetation up there, but then it's just a full curb cut out in the front. And then I look at kind of how you get in and out of the site. You're on to that, just that one lane going up and down. It looks like your parking is all in back of the gas station, if that's how I read this correctly. So it's kind of a... If that's the only way in or out...
So there is another exit off of the end of the parking where it tapers there. It actually is connected to the driveways of the next... The neighbors on the other side.
In the back.
It used to... Yes, exactly. It used to be a funeral home, I believe, on that side.
Yeah.
And we've actually been working with that owner as well on kind of what we've been planning for this building, and we have already been talking to him about it. He has verbally agreed to let us kind of share and have people exit out of that site as well. When I'm at the site, I personally usually exit out that way, and it's a lot easier to turn left or right back onto Bedford Street from that location.
So yeah, so maybe there's, if we think about this a little more, maybe there's an entrance only, and then you direct traffic out that way to Lane Funeral Home with, you know, with access to there. And maybe that's something to think about.
Yeah, there's actually two exits around the funeral home on either side of it.
Yeah.
So you have a verbal agreement with them right now?
Correct.
We might want to see that memorialized.
Formalized, something written down.
I think it would be to your benefit as well.
Yeah, but I think maybe that one way, because I would think it would be probably difficult if not dangerous to get, you know, kind of a two-way coming out there. And then you're going to try to turn out right at that intersection there, if you're coming out and not taking a right, but you try to take that left across the two, three, four lanes there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Beau. Mike?
Not much, Madam Chair. It sounds like a perfect use for the building, and I'm happy to see that it's being going to be utilized, so nothing...
Okay, thank you.
No, I'm kind of confused about the parking. And so you come in off Bedford Street and go down into the parking lot?
Correct. As the mouse is moving, that's correct.
And your entrance is at the front of the building?
Correct. Now, where... There is...
If I may just finish. So you get out of the automobile and you walk along there to go to the front of the building?
So we're actually proposing also a new side door, a little bit higher than where the mouse is, right about there. That could be another additional customer entrance.
Yeah, I would think you'd need something, because you don't have room enough to put a sidewalk in.
Yeah, correct, but the entrance to the building would be on the Bedford Street side. There are also a couple of parking spaces in the front of the building as well as on the plan.
Yeah, I would think you would have, you know, something out of the parking lot into the building and possibly a corridor or whatever, or that goes directly into your showroom.
That would go directly into our showroom from that side door, correct.
Okay, no, that was the first thing that I noticed.
Okay, thank you. So I actually think it would be very important for you to add that second door in the back, because otherwise you're going to have people walking to the front where traffic could be coming in, especially if someone is in the upstairs and you have more traffic than just the people who are coming to your storeroom. So that could create a safety problem. So I would think that that would be a requirement to have a door back there right where you indicated. I have a question. Looking at the other side of the building, there seems to be a grassy patch right there. So that strip of...
No, there is no grass on that side.
There is no grass, okay.
It's all pavement.
So that's all paved, but can you... You can't drive around the back of the building, can you?
You can right now. But in our work with the Conservation Commission...
Then you won't be able to.
We've completely removed all of that pavement for infiltration.
Right, oh, okay. So that brings me to my question. If you can't drive around the back of the building, it seems like there would be an opportunity for us to remove some of this impervious surface, that strip of broken-up pavement there on the left, right?
That is all going to be removed.
That's all, oh, great.
As per the plan, up to, there's a double line there back, and that's going to be all infiltration for the Conservation Commission.
So that'll be grass?
It will be the grading and everything that they've, that we've worked with them on.
Okay, great, thank you.
It will be vegetated in the bottom, correct.
Okay, so currently, where is your dumpster?
It's going to be right above that location.
Right there. Okay, so then beyond the dumpster, it's grass?
No, it'll be pavement to about where that mouse is, maybe a little bit higher than the mouse. Right about there is where the dumpsters would be.
Okay.
And you've got a little bit of pavement to let the dump trucks or whoever else in.
Okay, okay.
Can you help me out a little bit? Well, I'm confused then. So how do you enter the site?
You come in.
Right, yep, right there where that mouse comes in.
You come in that way?
Drive down.
Okay, okay.
So is the only reason why there's a second curb cut because of the dumpster?
I think the second curb cut was already existing.
Right.
Because people probably drove around the building in the past.
Okay, so would there be the potential to close that other curb cut and just have that one entrance in?
Right.
I actually almost would have preferred to remove the curb completely from the front to not have to have other cars hit it, but it is a potential, but I think it might be sometimes easier for people to come in that section to park in those other parking spaces in the front of the building as well.
It's easier to pull in the first entrance and then come out the other.
Yes.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
If you're parking in front, yeah.
Yeah, it's like a kind of look at U shape you could come out of.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that you're ripping up that pavement and increasing some of the green space. I think that this is probably one of the few uses that will work in this building, although I agree with Member Covina and Member Gaffney that we're going to need you to come back when you get a tenant upstairs to make sure you can park it. But what I would really like to see you do in addition is make some improvements that would not be very expensive, some landscape to soften this. It's a very boxy building. I think as Kristin mentioned, you have that very narrow landscape bed in front of the building. I would like to see you capitalize on that as much as possible with things with height. They can be narrow, things with height, grasses or narrow trees that grow not too large. They have trees that stay very narrow. Something to soften that a little bit. I'd also like to see some landscaping on the right between the end of that fence and the telephone pole. You could put a little landscape island in there, maybe add a tree.
So the business next door, Burlington Motors, they actually do sometimes park some of their vehicles in the lot, and that's kind of a good way, that's a safe way for them to move vehicles back and forth between our sites. If we put vegetation there...
They move vehicles onto your site?
Just to park for once or twice, one or two vehicles when they're tight on their space.
They're not going to be allowed to do that. Once you're work... Once you have business open, you're not going to have extra parking spaces for them.
Correct. They also plow the site as is today. So their vehicle goes back and forth for plowing as well.
They can go out onto the street and go back in.
Not exactly a point pro quo.
Yeah, the one or two cars is typically more than one or two cars currently, seeing as they go by there.
But we've talked to them, and they have basically moved all of the cars off.
So they're aware that they're not going to be able to park on your site anymore? Because this is, you're tight on parking.
Yeah, I have notified them that we're not allowing that, but occasionally.
Yeah, when you come back, I would love to see a simple landscape plan. Nothing overly elaborate, but something that would beautify your site. It would actually be to your benefit. You have customers coming here that are buying high-end hardware. You want it to look nice. So I think anything you can do to beautify it with some landscaping would be to your benefit as well as to ours. I have a question.
A comment on the front landscaping, though. If we actually use that strip and put some tall trees there, I'm concerned that it's going to block the display of the windows. So one of the appeals of the building is all of the glass to allow you to see the displays through the windows from the street.
You'll be able to see them from the street?
Some displays may be visible. We're actually going to have a conference room in the front right-hand corner there, and we may have a few like chandeliers or something as a main centerpiece of that front lobby vestibule area, and that may actually be provided by one of our vendors as a lighting display.
Okay, well then maybe we can look at ornamental grasses and flowers. They don't have to be as high, but something to soften that. You could keep it at the three-foot or lower, so that it's not obscuring what you're trying to display. I also am... One, two more questions. How many employees do you have?
Currently, four.
Four, so there's going to be four spaces for employees?
Two actually carpool all the time, so it'd really be three employee vehicles.
So the side where the dumpster is, there's ability to stack four cars there so the employees could park over there?
I'm not sure you're allowed to do that. Stack cars there, then...
You can have tandem for employees.
Okay.
You can't have public tandem.
Is there room for four?
In front of the dumpster, which is why we left some of that pavement in front of the dumpster.
So that's not included in the 26 parking spaces?
That is not included in the parking space number.
The 26, we ask, we have them count real spaces. I mean, if they want to... That's why they have it in here as 28, not including the four stacked, because, I mean, it's...
Okay.
We've allowed stacked four employees in certain situations.
Okay, so the other thing that I'm going to be looking for when you come back besides a landscape plan is some walkways to define where people are walking from the parking lot to that back door, and also to define something in front of the building. Because people are parking in front of the building, you need to define where the people are supposed to walk if they're parking and then walking in your front door, because you want... It's just a visual thing that slows the cars down when there's someone walking there.
So would striped paint on the pavement be sufficient for that?
Yes, we prefer something with pavers, but we can see what you can do. I understand that you're trying to keep the costs down, but we need, for safety reasons, it needs to be defined where the people are supposed to walk so that cars know, hey, somebody's going to be walking here. I need to be aware, both at the front door and at the back door. Okay?
Okay.
All right, did you... Did you have additional comments down there or no? Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak on this matter?
So, Madam Chair, I just have one question with the stacking of the cars. So you've got two proposed dumpsters.
Two?
Looks like that, right?
So we are planning for a recycling dumpster and a regular dumpster. However, we may or may not do the recycling dependent on cost.
Is the dumpster currently enclosed?
It will be enclosed on the plan. It is actually enclosed on the plan.
Yeah, that's good. So then the idea is you've got the two spots up top, if you want to use your mouse there. So you've got your two, four spots up top. You've got the two handicaps, and you've got the two spots to the left, right? then you get the two spots to the left, right over there. So then you're saying the stacking of the cars is going to be after... You're going through those two parking spots and then you're going towards that dumpster. So your access to the dumpster is the two, you have to go through the two parking spots and then your two employees are going to park in front of that dumpster where the two parking spots are. Is that correct?
Correct, as shown on the plan, correct as of now.
So normally, I don't know, with plans like this, I don't know if I've ever seen that you have parking spots blocking a dumpster access. Have we ever done that?
I don't think we do generally do that, no.
It's usually a clear shot, no parking because that's you need dumpster access, and that's why you have it.
We have some sites that have parking in front of the dumpsters. But, I mean, for all of these reasons are reasons why we're not having them in the parking. I mean, if they can manage and use the site that way, that's fine, but we're not permitting. We're not permitting that they're okay, spaces are that.
No, but I'm even talking about the two spaces that are in the parking, the dumpster.
Yeah.
There are spaces that are actual spaces, look like they're in front of the lane where you would have to drive to get to the dumpster.
So, you know, if I'm sitting there and, you know, let's say I'm going to a football game or something, I say, hey, do my brother park there, you know, I know these guys are open on Sunday. Just park there, right, just park in that parking spot and let's go, and I'll meet you there, we'll go. So if the car's there, then the dumpster comes in, he doesn't have that clear access because you've got the two parking spots there.
Yep, that's true.
So that could be a problem.
So, I mean, the plan for the dumpster, the location that we're at right now is only once a month that it gets emptied.
Yeah.
We do not generate a lot of trash at all with the showroom, so we're not expecting that to be like a weekly pickup or anything like that.
Is it possible to move the dumpster to the other side of the building in the back?
I would love to do that. Actually, that was our original idea, it was in the bottom right-hand corner of the building. However, Conservation does not want us to put the dumpster right next to the brook. I would absolutely put it there if I could.
Good instinct, that's where we'd like to see it too, but I guess that's not allowed, okay?
Madam Chair, we've had situations where dumpsters have been in a spot that they empty them in the middle of the night or whatever, and we had to really clamp down in some of those situations. But I would think here that you could say to the dumpster, you can't come in after seven o'clock in the morning or whatever, in other words, you know, you keep that open. And if the dumpster came during the day, wouldn't they be able to pick up? Because this is such a tight space that you may have to make some accommodations that you wouldn't normally, because that space has been open a long time.
So your dumpster is going to have to be parked at dumped, just emptied at midnight. It's going to have to be.
Yes.
Well, if the dumpster comes and the cars are there, you say...
There you go, and so that's why I said I've never seen it on a plane, and I've only been here for five years, is that I've never seen a dumpster being blocked by parking spaces, whether you have employees parking or not, you know, just as much as a mouth, I've never seen that.
Yeah, well, I can't recall as primordial sight that there was this tight, and the only reason I'm thinking this would be good if they could do it because that's about, I couldn't see any use for the building because if you look at it, I mean, the building, you know, uses the whole site. And I really wasn't aware, because I said, well, people are going to park, you know, four spaces in front. But I wasn't aware that there was parking behind the gas station.
You might need some signage so that people realize they can park in the back.
Yeah, I was thinking on the left-hand corner of the building, put in a sign that says additional parking in the rear with a little arrow.
Because I don't think I would have realized that was your parking lot if I were a customer, so...
Yeah, just parking in the rear.
And you said you're planning to repave that drive aisle on the left back to the parking lot?
The entire pavement will be all repaved.
Good, good.
Because it's all torn up right now. Like I said, this building's been vacant for 15 to 20 years. I mean, we're trying to redevelop something and put it to a good use without knocking it down.
Okay, so we're going to be looking for walkways, landscaping, dumpster plan. Anything else I'm missing?
Just the curb cut there.
The curb cut, you mean close it, what do you specifically mean on the curb cut?
Yeah, I think of the curb, well, I mean, you want to remove it, we're saying we probably want to figure out how to best work that with the dumpsters coming in and out, and then you could...
Yes.
So again, I'm, I don't know, the way I'm just thinking, the building...
If you close the curb cut, you could put a couple of parking spaces there.
Put a couple of spaces there.
Then the truck could get in from the left and turn.
Go out there, but I'm thinking is really kind of move that traffic just, it's a one, go down, one way down that strip and out the lane funeral hall. Just one way in, one way out.
Yeah, well, that's something, you'll have to see if you can actually get an agreement with the owners of that property to formalize it.
That's not their need, is that, in writing?
Yeah, yes, because if it's not in writing, we can't demand that people leave that way. Okay, do you have any questions for us?
So just want to recap, so the plans that you want us to revise for next time is going to include a walkway, and that could potentially just be lined markers on the pavement.
And I think that's important, that's why you'd have the one way. If you're going to have two-way traffic coming up, there's not going to be any space for people to walk. So that's why I'm really thinking of that.
Well, it is fairly wide. It is definitely wider than, I think, a vehicle in a walkway could potentially have space. I mean, I've been on the site all the time.
But it's two vehicles, you talk about...
You may or may not, I don't think you could fit two vehicles two-way at the same time simultaneously.
Okay, so it's got to be a one-way.
Okay, yeah, one way to the back and the other way, yeah.
And a clarification on what would you like us to do with the curb cut? I personally would like to leave it the way it is because I do sometimes come in through that side. It's easier, and then if I want to, I can pull out the other side without having to go around the building.
I think you're going to have to leave for ease of dumpster too. The big dumpster truck's not going to make that turn if you close it off and they have to come in from the left.
But if people are going out the other way, maybe you could close the curb cut on the left. Then you can add some spaces there and you might not have to block your dumpster. So everybody comes in on the right, goes around the back of the building and exits the other way, out the back. It would give you the opportunity to add a couple of spaces there.
So the loading dock is actually going to be moved to the left side of the building as we're looking at it?
Yeah.
And the theory was that a truck would back straight down that alleyway, right back to that loading dock.
It's a tough site.
It is very tough.
It is a very, very tough site. I mean, we've been trying, we've been noodling over this for a long, long time.
Okay.
So I would almost request that we could leave both of the curb cuts as they are.
Then come back with a fabulous landscape plan.
There are some nice low evergreens now.
And a big one-way arrow going that way, and then only at nighttime when the dump, you do a pickup and drop off, was going to have to be at night too because you're going to have...
Yes, all that, yeah, it's tough. Okay.
We don't get a lot of 18-wheelers at all, we get them on occasion with very large items.
You get smaller truckloads?
UPS, UPS and FedEx, so we're going to have a dock level around the loading dock.
But I just realized, we never read department comments.
Now you can read them.
Let's do that.
All right, let's read them to the record, thank you.
Continue this matter to the planning board meeting.
We forgot to do that before.
Building inspector. Approval with the following recommendations. One, application to slash approval from the Burlington Conservation Commission. Two, favorable Section 6 finding, 6.1.2.1, number four, for the lack of required parking spaces. And 6.1.2.2, for the reduction of impervious surface area from the planning board. And three, though the drawings don't show any details for the install of an elevator. Should an elevator be proposed, details of such should be shown on the drawing with any oil separator designs. Install of an elevator and associated equipment will require favorable approvals from Conservation Commission and the environmental engineer. This building, DPW, looks like they're standard boilerplate stuff. The water meter greater than 5/8 inches has to be properly right-sized. Installation of the water meter should be installed in a location that's unobstructed, easily accessible. Prior to the issuance of any utility permit, the applicant must have their media configuration diagram approved by the DPW. Applicants should apply to the DPW office for approval of any backflow prevention device for irrigation, fire suppression systems, chemical injection systems, or any other case which backflow prevention is required. All commercial properties must include a cross-connection survey prior to any final sign-off on the CO by the Department of Public Works. All backflow control devices found to be needed must be installed and tested prior to sign-off of the CO by the Department of Public Works. Proposed plan should be 12, to install a 12 by 12 by 6 T noted at M will not be allowed. A taping sleeve and gate shall be installed instead of the proposed T. Those are the water comments, sewer comments. The applicant should analyze sewage flow from Title V and current proposed conditions to determine required sewer allocation. If there's a change in use or expansion, the applicant should submit necessary floor plans and seating plans to supplement the sewer allocation calculations and determination of compliance with MWRA pretreatment and/or discharge permit. Stormwater comment, any project that increases the impervious area shall have a stormwater management system which shall be designed to mitigate any increases in rate and volume of stormwater. The project's stormwater management systems shall be designed as not to increase the peak rate of runoff or volume of stormwater in the 2, 10, 25, and 100-year storm events. Should I read?
No, you don't need to read all of that. Have you, you've received these, correct?
Yes, yes, and that was actually what...
Do you have any questions or objections?
No.
Okay.
I think those, some of the stuff...
Yeah, some of the stuff that we provided was responsible.
Which we can review those.
DPW, nothing from police, fire departments favorable, Board of Health have the following comments on the reference proposal. Renovations are subject to the Board of Health hazardous building component management plan policy. The proponents slash owners should complete a Board of Health predemolition, pre-renovation inspection checklist prior to any interior or exterior renovations of the site building. Should an increase of oil or hazardous material locations or other conditions be encountered during proposed site activities, the Toxics and Hazardous Materials Bylaw requires that the Board of Health be notified of such releases. Third one, any future tenant using, storing, or generating oils, hazardous materials, or hazardous biological materials should complete a hazardous materials registration form for the submittal to the Board of Health in which all hazardous materials used and waste generated on-site would be listed in the storage locations indicated on the plan of the building. This form shall be required for each tenant who will use, store, or generate hazardous materials. Number four, during construction work, dust, odor, and noise, control plan should be in place. And number five, any changes in site plans or environmental conditions will be submitted to the environmental engineer or other Board of Health representative to determine whether or not an appearance before Board of Health is required. And Conservation is favorable here.
All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing no one, do you have any other questions for us before we continue?
Just a comment that the Conservation Commission was prepared to issue the order of conditions next week. Do we think there's any reason, if we come back with our landscape and walkway plans, that we should not do that?
The only question they're going to ask is, did you change, are we changing anything in the back of the site? And it sounds like most of the comments are focused to the front of the site, correct?
I mean, the only thing we're asking... We don't get the parking, the access all the way through. If that happens, then it flips its own head and not know how we do it, so that's the big condition. If Lane doesn't agree, then you flip everything on its head. So we got to figure out how to bring it down.
If Lane doesn't agree, we still can't have them go around the back of the building because Conservation's taking up that space, so...
Yeah, so there is a, the whole thing falls apart, yeah, yeah. There's no way, there's one way in, there's no way out. Can't have two, you can't fit two cars there going back and forth.
Right.
Yeah, right, yeah, so elevator ramp, I don't know.
So that's going to be probably the most important thing you work on before you come back, is trying to get that agreement with your neighbor.
Okay.
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 Thank you, I think we can make it work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Want to continue this to the 16th?
Yes, please.
Make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of October 16, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we are on item D, a public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, one-wheeler road, U66 Corporation is the applicant.
Evening again, Madam Chairman.
Hello.
Thanks, Liz.
Thank you.
All right, Tom, maybe you can do the introductions for everyone.
Yes, I'd be happy to. This property is at One Wheeler Road, which for reference sake is at the corner of Middlesex Turnpike and Wheeler Road. It's a big green building as it stands right now, there's a Gulf Tech store in there. Point of reference. Sitting with me here at the table, Madam Chair, over on the right is Dan Yu, who's the principal of U66 Corp., and the owner of the property. Jim White is the civil engineer. Mr. Yu has been a commercial resident of town for over 30 years. He bought that building down there that currently exists. And over the years, obviously, that area of town has been redeveloped, kind of a gateway into the Middlesex Turnpike area if you're coming from the island to Lexington area. So Dan's at the point now where he feels he's got to reinvest in the site and try to bring it up aesthetically and practically and make it competitive in the rental market down that area. So that's the motivation behind what he's doing. We have, the current building is about 20,000 square feet, the proposed building's about 22,000 square feet. So it's not going to be appreciably larger. There's going to be some site improvements with respect to runoff and treatment of runoff. The building will, I would submit, the new building is going to look significantly better aesthetically, and it's going to be, it's going to fit the site better than what's currently there. I'm going to defer to Jim and to John to go through the site and also to show you some pictures of what they have in mind over there. But it's basically an opportunity for my client to reinvest in the site and rehabilitate the site. We did go to the Board of Appeals and received a couple of variances with respect to the proposal, one for the amount of impervious surface on the site and one for the height of the building. So those were approved by the Board of Appeals back earlier this summer. And they were included in the application too, so you have copies of that decision. So with that, if I could, Madam Chair, turn it over to Jim, the site engineer, and he can kind of walk you through the plan a little bit.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Good evening, my name is Jim White, I'm a engineering from H.W. Moore Associates. I think most of you are very familiar with the proposed site, the site. Middlesex Turnpike is to the west, Wheeler Road to the south, Route 128 to the north. It's a big green building as you look down from the highway. Presently, there's a retail use building, it's one level with a second level that has some storage in it. We have a wetland area, Vine Brook, which is considered river under the Wetland Protection Act, along this area, which is the southeast area of the site. And then there's a large wetland off-site to the north of the site. Presently, this site was developed quite a few years ago. It doesn't meet the common stormwater standards that we have today. Stormwater from the whole site, almost the whole site flows down into just a tank located in this area that discharges the river. So it doesn't meet the current standards we have and of our quality standards.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Oh, sure, sure. The building's also only about 45 feet from Middlesex Turnpike as it is today. This is an overlay of the proposed building and the proposed parking. The building is now set back about a hundred and twenty-seven feet off Middlesex Turnpike. Uh, the footprint is actually a little bit smaller. It's a two-story building. What we plan on having is a first, first-story retail use, which parking at the lower level, and then a drive that comes up for a second level, uh, which has frontage, uh, on Middlesex Turnpike, and it'll be about the same elevation as Middlesex Turnpike. As you go by Middlesex Turnpike, currently, you'll kinda look down at the building. So now you'll be looking more into the first-floor building, which make the retail use much more visible. Uh, we have Vine Brook in this location. Uh, all the work is outside the flood zone area, so we're not doing any work in the flood zone area. We will be providing, you want, listen. A new stormwater management system complying with the current DEP and town requirements. Uh, we'd be putting a large infiltration system in the upper parking lot, and a, and a large one in the lower parking lot. Uh, this will provide, uh, considerable recharge. In fact, it's about, uh, ten times the amount of recharge required on the DEP's, uh, stormwater policy. So we're gonna be recharging most of the stormwater back in, in the ground rather than having it flow out into the river under proposed conditions. Um, as far as utilities go, we have sewer line in Wheeler Road. We're gonna be connecting to existing sewer service. And there's a water line that presently runs in the old Wheeler Road. Uh, old Wheeler Road been in the back area of the site. Uh, that water line is gonna be relocated, and then we're gonna tie into existing water line on the site. We have parking for, for a hundred and three, uh, vehicles, as President Jones. Uh, at this time, we don't know if the exact use of the buildings or tenants of the buildings, so we don't know if there's gonna be a small restaurant or all retail use, but designed for retail and possibly small restaurant use. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, John's just gonna give the board a little bit of an idea of what is usually going to work out.
Okay, thank you.
It's almost better to use that.
Yes, feel free.
I just kinda wave my arms around at that, it's probably the best thing to do. So again, my name is John Ruffo, and I'm, uh, founding principal of Form and Place, where architecture and planning were basically-
The TV can't hear you if you don't use the microphone.
Okay.
For all our viewers.
So, um, uh, so, uh, one of the things that we talk about a lot on this project is that it's, it's not about, uh, a giant increase in density. It's really about repositioning the building for today's retail market and today's frankly, um, aesthetic presence of retail. And, um, so the main idea behind it is that rather than a building being kinda down in the bowl the way it is today, and, you know, you don't really have to explain away the, the need to change the aesthetics of the building from what's there now, um, but to be able to have two floors on it, one floor which you see in the left-hand side of this image, that is, uh, retail storefronts facing out, um, to Middlesex Turnpike, and then on the lower right, the, uh, the retail storefronts that face out toward Wheeler. Um, that's really just critical to the redevelopment of the site and for, uh, for Dan's purposes. So, um, the main idea behind it is that you've, uh, the building itself, uh, needs to be able to, uh, speak to both sides at once, uh, both Wheeler and the Middlesex Turnpike, um, as well as be able to, uh, begin to create sightlines as you come, uh, both south and north on the Middlesex Turnpike, so that you can see that there's something happening here and not kinda tucked away and very opaque the way the building is today. You really want something that's kind of by today's standards and much more, uh, much more visible and present. So I don't know if you can, if you can scroll through those images and you can just see the, uh, individual, um, individual elevations. So, uh, so this elevation is essentially a two-story elevation that looks out onto Wheeler Road, um, where the storefronts are down, uh, down low, and then large, larger facade up higher, and then the corner element is, uh, will actually begin to show you, thank you, show you the, um, the retailer at the corner on the top. And then if we scroll down one more elevation, that's the, uh, Middlesex Turnpike, um, elevation which looks out, and we imagine three to four tenants there, um, with signage elements that are trying to give people as early a cue in the process. Um, one of the critical things that we talked about, and we talked about a lot with the ZBA, is that the building, I think Jim said today, the very corner of it is about forty-five feet from Middlesex. But here, the building is literally a hundred and twenty feet back from Middlesex, which is pretty rare along that stretch. So that's one of the reasons why the facade's kinda got a little bit of, um, a little bit of height to it, and the presence is, we're really trying to make sure that those retailers get their presence onto the street. That's been kind of a critical part of the, of the redevelopment of it. So, in, in a nutshell, I think those are the, uh, those are the main, uh, the main pieces of the design. Happy to answer any questions, obviously.
Thank you.
Um, we have not yet been before the, the Board of Health, um, and they're only meeting once this month, which is after your next meeting. So just for purposes of where we go from here, uh, we'd probably be looking to, to continue to the first meeting in November. Hopefully by then, we will have been before them, and you'd have their comments. I believe there's also a joint, the presidential meeting coming up next week, I was told, that we might try to see if we can get on that to have, to speak about some of the, you know, we've got the comments in from some, some of the departments, and that'll give us an opportunity to work through those.
Okay, all right, thank you. Kristen?
Sorry, Liz was just like, November seventh's gonna be really busy. Anyway, uh, so this is another site. It's a tough site. It's, as mentioned, it's kind of in, in a valley on its own there. Um, it's had a myriad of different tenants and different colors and patterns on the building for some time. Um, so, you know, I, I think we're, it's, it's ripe for redevelopment, especially with all the roadway work and improvements that, that have happened along Middlesex Turnpike. Um, we're just opening it tonight. Um, we're still, you know, reviewing it a little bit, but overall, we're comfortable with, with the layout. Again, it, the, the site itself can work, you know, one of one way. So, you know, I think they're just trying to make, make the best, um, situation to accommodate the parking. We have mentioned, um, you know, it's twenty-two thousand square feet, eleven on each floor. Sites like this that are a little bit tricky, um, we have found in other locations that if they have a whole bunch of small tenants, especially in some plazas that you've seen before, a whole bunch of like lunch tenants, that sites like this that are tricky can be overwhelmed very quickly. So just when they're looking at different tenants, um, to look at different sizes of tenants as well as kind of just limiting, um, you know, I think every fast casual restaurant in the country wants to be in Burlington, which is fantastic, but, uh, we just need to balance the site so they work, um, at lunchtime, um, for, for this site, for other sites, um, to take a look at that. We're looking at, what's the curbing on-site proposed? Is it all, it's all vertical granite? Okay. Um, so that's good. Um, the Board of Appeals did approve the variance, if you remember the initial request. They have done a lot of work on the facade of the building and kind of bringing down the balance of the tower to match the rest of the building. So I think they did a lot of work with the Board of Appeals, and Board of Appeals did a lot of good work to make this, um, make the, the building really present, present well, and the architect, I think, has done a lot of work with that. Um, other than that, I guess we're gonna hold the rest of my comments, um, on the site. But, you know, we wanna obviously increase landscaping where you can pedestrian access and activity in and around the site, just take a look at what, what pedestrian access points exist around here and just other stuff, so.
Okay. Thank you. Paul, do you wanna start us off?
Sure. Uh, so, there's, you, you really have two levels of parking. And so I'm looking at the bottom middle-left, and is that a ramp that's going up? Cause you're ha, you're showing the parking right next to the second level. So how do you get up there and where are the people? Is, is the left where the parking is for the bo, lower level?
That parking can be for either level.
Say?
That parking can be for e, either level, the parking along, uh, Middlesex Turnpike. Uh, they can access, um, either level from that location. Uh, there's stairs in, or there's walks where they can either go up or down stairs, um, to access the, the stores on either lower level, uh, upper level. The parking lot in that area slopes at about five and a half percent, so it does slope up, you know, from the lower level up to the top, upper level.
Okay, that, that's facing, uh, ninety-five, the building is.
The back of it is.
Middlesex. Middlesex. Turnpike.
The higher level-
Because I'm looking at the, at the tower, call it whatever you want.
Switch between the two for you.
Yes.
I can, I can point out easier on the, on this plan.
Thank you.
That one probably explains a lot.
Is this, right? So this, where the mouse is, this view, right here, is this.
Right.
Does that help, Paul? So looking from where his pen is, is that picture. Right here.
Okay, and so-
So one-to-eight ramp is behind this.
The deck is on the left in that picture. So what do they do to get to the deck? Go around the back or?
They can walk this way, or they can walk along this walk and up these stairs to upper level.
No, I mean for the parking.
Cars, oh.
For parking-
Am I not seeing this correctly? Are there not two levels of parking?
There is.
It looks to me like on the right, the parking is lower, at ground level, and the, uh, left, that site is not that, uh, slanted or whatever, so that you could get up there without some kind of a ramp or something, I would think.
Okay. As, as you enter the driveway-
Yes.
Uh, the driveway starts sloping up and-
Yes, okay.
And it slopes up about five and a half percent to this location.
Okay, so-
And this area slopes down to lower level.
Okay, so this is, the, the change in elevation occurs at the driveway?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so you take in driveway. Uh, I, I didn't look at to see how the parking is gonna be, uh, what the, the numbers are going to be, but what do you, what do you envision the usage, say, on the second level?
Five, if you want me to answer.
You have no idea?
I have a-
And it could, it could be office, it could be retail, it could be anything. Look, a restaurant?
Yeah.
There have been restaurants there, several, yeah.
Retail and, uh, anything, just one restaurant or maybe?
Okay.
I would imagine that.
Uh, yeah. I have questions about the tower, cause we, we've had, uh, people in that building. We've seen this building a number of times, and we've had people that wanted major signage on ninety-five, and, uh, that I think we'll have to discuss, I would think, what we're gonna do as far as that tower is concerned. Is it gonna be lighted? Is it gonna be?
We have to talk about that.
Yeah, yeah. So that's just some of the things. Uh, that's a start for me, and I'm gonna listen.
Okay. Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You want me to read, uh-
Please.
The reports. Uh, building inspector favorable with recommendations, uh, approval with the following recommendations. One, require a minimum of five handicap parking spaces. Architectural barriers, board regulations twenty-three point two point one. Number two, require proof of the zoning board of appeals variance twenty-nineteen dash nine, dated July second, twenty nineteen, has been recorded with the Middlesex Registry of Deeds. Uh, number three, they do not believe one dumpster is shown will be enough for the quality quantity of tenants. Uh, lastly, number four, engineer to provide documentation that the three-thousand gallon grease trap retention tanks and dumps, dumpster are designed in accordance with seven-eighty CMR Mass State Building Code, Appendix G point seven-oh-one, Construction Within Flood Hazard Areas, and CMR five-two-seven, Fire Prevention Regulations. Number nine, under Tanks and Containers. DPW is the same as we've seen, uh, boilerplate stuff that, much in the same as the last one. And last one I have on here is Fire Department is favorable with conditions. They say, approval with the following modifications. Number one, hydrant locations be reviewed with the Fire Department. And number two, the rear of the building to be marked as one-way. Um, those are the conditions. As for my questions, I know this is another, I think it's tough site night tonight here at the planning board. Uh, wish you luck with it, cause I remember when this used to be like a Fuddruckers way back in the day.
Yeah, about that.
What's the impervious surface impact here? It looks like you've got a lot of impervious surface as opposed to what you're replacing in the new building. Is it, is similar?
Uh, we got a variance. Um, it's a little bit more pervious, uh, impervious surface than, than was there currently in our discussions with the Board of Appeals, and that was necessary just because of the, to try to configure the traffic flow and everything else. The Board of Appeals agreed that getting the, uh, the treatment of the runoff, um, as Jim described, was worth the, um, the little bit extra of impervious surface. So that was kind of, that was part of the discussions with the Board of Appeals. We were actually, I think we wound up going to four sessions of the Board of Appeals to kinda fine-tune this, um, and that was, uh, that was the gist of it, Mike. They, they agreed to, uh, allow a little bit more impervious in return for getting the treatment of the runoff.
And I know the, the tenants is something that's gonna be discussed down the line. How many tenants do you envision going in there? Cause on the lower level, they look, are those gonna be part, just on the lower level? Are they gonna be part of the upper level, that, that middle section there? Are those gonna be two-floor tenants, or we don't know, or?
I, I would really expect there to be one-level tenants on the, on the lower level and one-level tenants on the upper level.
Okay.
Just that the lower level, because it's on Wheeler, is a little bit more, even more challenging to lease. So thinking about how their signage almost suggests to the retailer as though they have a two-story front, but just to get them as much visibility as we can, but the fact is, chances are it's all one-level tenants below and one-level tenants above.
I really like the sign and how you're lifting the building so it's, uh, you with Middlesex Turnpike, so excellent job with that. Nothing further, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, my concerns, I think, is the, uh, plane director I mentioned was landscaping. Um, I checked out the landscaping plan. You have quite a bit over to the right on the corner of Wheeler Road, which is the farthest away from Middlesex Turnpike. You got a couple trees there, and then you're keeping a couple all the way along, but there's just very, very minimal landscaping along the front of Middlesex Turnpike. So I think we gotta really look, look at that. Um, yeah, my concern be, with Member Raymond said as well, that the tower up there is, uh, is certainly a concern with the signage, cause we, I think we might have learned our lesson with the, with the, uh, the old Dodge site there and, and the tower signage there. We caught that, that was a PDE, so we caught that a little too late. Um, but the, the only other question I had, I think Mr. Raymond mentioned it, was if you're at the top there, how do you get down? You can get down by car throw ramp, but if you're, you're pedestrian, you can come down through the stairs, but if you're handicapped on the top part, how do you get down? Do you have to take your wheelchair and go back around down the ramp and then back down? Or how's that gonna work?
Well, we have handicap parking on both levels, so we're feeling that, you know-
You're gonna drive, they're gonna take that handicap parking, drive down the other one?
Yes.
So, so you're gonna plan that one? Okay, I think that we can maybe just note that, but that's something to talk about. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Bill. Ernie?
Can you, can you reach the, uh, upper level with parking by going around the right side of the building also?
Yes.
You can, okay. And that, is that where the building inspector was looking for one-way sign or something?
Yes.
It's a tough site. I mean, you, you end up with a triangular building, which in itself is very odd, um, usually, uh, difficult to, well, that's yours. Uh, but it, it's a very tough site, and you did what you could do with it. I too would like to see a little bit more landscaping, or I would like to see landscaping, um, wherever you can, uh, can do it. And also, other, the, a question to staff, the, uh, parking, I think it was a hundred and eight spaces or a hundred and-
Hundred and three.
Hundred and three spaces. Is that adequate for anything that you- Is that adequate for anything that you could perceive proposed there? I noticed one of the possible tenants was urgent care or all those.
If they, if they find the right mix of use, that was my, that was the purpose of my comments of, the site has the ability to absolutely work seamlessly smoothly. But there's seven restaurants in here in lunchtime, it won't, so. And I don't think that's at all what the, the applicant's looking for. I'm just saying, you have to, a careful curated mix that will work and that's absolutely achievable. But they need to pay attention to their tenants.
Yeah, you should take a lesson from, uh, who's that, Linear Partners?
Linear.
Where the dandelion green used to be. They tried to jam a whole bunch of restaurants in there and it didn't work. And then they came back to us looking for relief and, in other words, if you caused the problem, don't necessarily think that we're going to solve it for you. But I'm, I'm glad to see this property finally being utilized. It's been, you know, since I've been here, it's been ski house and fire rockers. What is it before, fire rockers?
Gateway, Gateway.
Gateway computers.
Gateway with the big cow thing. Straw, strawberries.
Wasn't that Tweeter too?
Tweeter was there, right. If you found anything in the basement, you know, you might be able to, God, thank you.
Chinese restaurant.
Thank you, Ernie. I, I only have a couple of questions. I share the concerns of some of my board members regarding the tower lighting. We have to discuss that. I'd like to see a much more robust landscape plan when you come back so that we can look at that. I'm curious, the site now is almost, it's very low. It's like a, so are you going to be bringing in Phil in order to raise up that, the parking lot on the left?
Yes, we are.
Yes.
Some Phil, yes.
Is that something that the Board of Health has to get involved in? Where the Phil comes from and? Yeah, they'll, they'll ask those questions. Okay, so that'll be a Board of Health matter. Those were my questions.
I have one more that I just thought of. You said the Board, uh, Board of Appeals granted you a impervious surface area.
Water resource district, so the percentage was more than, I think it was sixty percent. I think we might be up to sixty.
How about on the, uh, is the tower higher than that allowed? Did they have to create, uh, height variance also?
They did.
We did receive a height variance.
You did, okay.
We came before them with a, a proposed tower that was higher than what we wound up with. As I said, we, we went back and forth with them for a few meetings.
And, and they talked to you about if you put signs on there, you have to?
We have to go, yeah, there was no permitting for signs. If, if and when we wanted to try to put signs on there, we'd have to go back to them.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, Madam Chair? You said something about the tower, was it tower lighting or what?
Yes, we need to discuss the lighting for the signage in the tower and how that would be lit, when it would be lit, how bright it will be. So we'll have to go over all of that because we, we want to make sure that, I mean, obviously it has to have some lighting so that people can see the signage. But we don't want it to be changing lights. We don't want it to be particularly brilliant. We probably want it, do we want it dimmed when it's not in use? So we'll have to go through all of that. Particularly. Yes.
You asked for a landscaping plan?
Yes.
Obviously, I mean, we show green, is, is going to be the green space and we can, we'll put something in there.
Right.
Any preference?
Put in as many trees as you can. We would like to see trees. And make it as, as, give it some depth and, and it is, there's very little green space on the site. So make the best use of it as you can.
Well, I just, uh, just remind everybody that around the site, it's, it's surrounded by wetlands. So.
Yes.
Visually, you don't know exactly where the one property line ends and the other one starts.
True.
But visually, there's a whole bunch of open streets.
Right. There's also opportunity to beautify a little bit in front of Millsack's Turnpike there. I know it's narrow, but they, there are trees that are narrow and, and that will grow nicely there.
I just wanted to try to get an idea if we're going to be putting things in there.
Sure. I understand. This is a public meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, see no one, I think we can continue. You said you'd like to wait till the November seventh meeting?
I think that would make sense because we're not going to be before the Board of Health till after your next meeting. So there's no sense in coming in.
Okay.
Motion to continue this, this matter to the, uh, planning board meeting of November seventh, twenty-seventh, twenty-nineteen.
Second.
Those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero, thank you. We'll see you on the seventh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to take item seven E, seven F and seven G together for discussion purposes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero. All right. Item seven E is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section six point one point one point one, alteration of a non-conforming use of the zoning bylaw. One eighteen Cambridge Street, Henley Enterprises is the applicant. Item seven F is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section six point one point two point two, non-conforming structures and premises of the zoning bylaw. One eighteen Cambridge Street, Henley Enterprises is the applicant. And item seven G is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a site plan. One eighteen Cambridge Street, Henley Enterprises is the applicant. Welcome. And you're back.
Are you getting the applicant, Madam Chairman?
Uh, with me is Randy Kazazian. He's a vice president of real estate for Henley Enterprises, who's the applicant. Also here is Brian Wallace, site engineer. And we brought our L S P, Bill Mitchell, who's also in the audience. This is noticed as, uh, on the agenda as a continued public hearing. We weren't, this is our first time actually here. There was an issue with the newspaper verdict from last time, which is why it was kicked over.
Okay.
Just in case people heard. Continued, we have not yet appeared before.
Thank you for clarifying that.
This, um, this site is one eighteen Cambridge Street. For those who might be listening, is, it's across the street from the high school football field. It was for years, um, the site of a gas station run by the Harrington family. And I think Tom Harrington's here in the audience. Harrington family still owns the site. For the last several years, it, it's in the site of a, an auto repair business. That tenant has recently moved out. I think everybody, including Tom Harrington, will agree it's not the most attractive site in town. It's also, um, I don't want to overuse the word gateway, but if you're coming in three A from, from, um, from one-twenty-eight, just before you get into the town center area and, you know, it's a, it's a, we all know it's a well-praveled road. So what we have proposed here, and we're asking, uh, the applications both for a special permit to modify a pre, a non-conforming pre-existing use and also a site plan review. It's, um, Valvoline instant oil change. It's a, um, I don't want to give their, their competition some.
Does it have jiffy?
But it's, it's like a, it's like a jiffy lube, like that. You, you drive your car in, they change the oil and, and, and you move out. And I'm going to let Randy explain the, um, the business because he obviously knows a lot more about than I. But what it is, um, I would submit is a, is an opportunity to, to really renovate and rehabilitate the site. We have some stenatics showing what the, what the Valvoline building looks like. Everything's red brick, which is kind of in keeping with our town center, um, design standards, even though we're not quite into the town center where that is. And there's going to be some green spaces. Right now, this site is, is almost entirely impervious surface. We're tearing up a lot of that. There's going to be the green space that I know that everybody likes and we'll put trees in. They're going to put a new fence along the boundary line between their site and the neighbors. And it's just going to make a thousand percent improvement in the, in the aesthetics of the site. Uh, if I could, Madam Chairman, I'd like to turn it over to Randy. Can you give you an overview of what the business is like?
Yes, please.
Brian, here to answer any questions or, or give you a rundown of the site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Turn it over to Randy.
Hi, good evening. So Henley Enterprises is a Valvoline instant oil change franchisee. We operate fifty-three locations in Southern New Hampshire, Eastern Massachusetts and Rhode Island. Our two closest stores to this location would be, one is on Route three in Arlington, just behind the Public Safety Building. And the other is on Monfair Ave in Woburn, right near the interchange where the old Registry of Motor Vehicles used to be across the street. We've operated in Arlington for thirty-one years and we've operated in Woburn for approximately fifteen years. Both of those buildings are of similar style to the building we propose here. They're red brick, but we've added a tower feature a couple of years ago to our building and that allows us to aggregate the signage in one location and, and remove some of the clutter from the building. As Tom talked about, the building is, uh, it has a full basement in it, which is integral to our operations. But it's, um, built from block with a red brick veneer and then it has a forty-year architectural shingle on the roof. We've been consistent in that design for over thirty years and the reason for that is it provides a consistent curb appeal for our customers. And we like that to continue. The interior of the, of the, um, the building, there is obviously painted block walls, but we do use auto tile like you'd see in a showroom on the floor. And it's, uh, it's bright and light because we use, uh, full glass roll-up doors in both the front and back. So it improves the customer experience. In this particular instance, it's, um, the way our, our operations work, customers would enter off of, of Cambridge Road. Right now, there's, there's no real curb cut there, so we're adding one right after the Phillips glass. When they come on property, they'd be greeted by one of our customer service representatives. They'd be asked if they're a first-time customer of Valvoline, if they've been before. And then they'd either be guided into the service bay where they'd be asked to queue up behind one if they were all full. Our service, the way we differentiate ourselves from our competitors is you stay in your car for that service and it's a fifteen-minute service. So primarily, we do oil changes, but we also change coolant, uh, transmission fluids, transaxles. We can change wiper blades, we do a safety check and we can replace a bulb for you. But again, our primary focus is the oil change to be done a fifteen-minute.
So the people pull in, they stay in their car while all of the work is done and then they pull out?
So there's a podium, there's a podium next to each one of the base. So you'd pull in and a customer service representative would scan your car. That would tell the manufacturer's recommendation for the type of oil, um, filter and those types of things. And then we'd go through that selection process. Once you've made those selections, you're welcome to watch our technician work on the top side. We are working to add cameras on the bottom side so you can see the technician below to do that work as well. We have nothing to hide and we think we provide a terrific service. The service culminates with, um, with the technician showing you the dipstick and the new clean oil on it. The customer is then guided out of the, um, out of the bay, one customer at a time. And in this particular case, they'd go to the side street and have the ability to turn left and go back out to Cambridge Street.
Oh, so they exit out onto that other road?
Yeah, I believe it's Edwards Road.
Okay.
So they would, it's, it's, and so that's enter only on, on, well, I shouldn't say that. It's two-way because, um, so in, in this particular facility, we'd have a maximum, um, of seven employees on at peak hours. And our, obviously our employees would be the ones that would park on-site. Customers stay in their cars. We don't do any other type of services and we don't allow customers to drop off their cars. So if someone should come in and they have another problem, we certainly try to guide them to a full-service automotive repair facility or a dealership. But after hours, there's no cars left on the site. We close down. Our typical operating hours are from seven-thirty in the morning till seven P M. in the evening. Sunday, uh, we did open about seven years ago on Sunday and we operate from nine to five. And that was a result of our customers requesting that service. I did talk about, we would have a total of probably fifteen full and part-time employees here.
Fifteen?
Yeah, total. They don't work all at the same time, so we have, we have full and part-time. It's a variety of folks, like the full-time manager and assistant manager. And then we typically have younger folks that are, uh, in high school or college that are looking for part-time hours. And so we typically have, um, minimum four-hour shifts that work. There's not a lot of parking on the side as you can see, but our employees come a couple of different ways. So we obviously have people have their own vehicles. We have young folks that are dropped off by parents or, or other friends. And we have others that carpool as well as take public transportation. So in our Arlington store, we have folks that take the bus and come to work. And others come on bike.
So you said there'll be no more than seven employees at one time?
Seven employees in a full shift. So on a, a Saturday morning, uh, Friday afternoons, which are our busiest times, you'd have seven employees. There's, uh, two employees in the, in the bottom side in the basement that are doing that work. And then on the top side, you'd have five employees. One is the manager that actually, um, does the workflow and makes sure that things are running through. And one of those employees would be out in the parking lot greeting folks. So, uh, in order to stay consistent with our fifteen-minute oil change, you're greeted. They use iPads now and they can scan the car in so that we can move you through in those peak times. We would, um, expect this store to, um, upon maturity, which is typically two to three years, to service fifty cars a day on average. And, um, and that fluctuates. Wednesdays tend to be our lightest day. That could be somewhere between thirty and thirty-five cars. And Fridays and Saturdays could approach seventy to seventy-five cars on instances. I think one of the things, um, to note is we're convenient. So typically people will drive by and if there's more than three or four cars in the parking lot, they would continue on, do the dry cleaning or some other errand and then come back because what we're selling is convenient. So folks aren't going to want to wait an hour. They can go to the dealership to do that. And there are, as I said, some peak times, but there are a number of times when the bays are not full. And we're looking at eleven and a half hours on an average of fifty cars, so it's less than four cars an hour.
Just one thing I just wanted to add and I meant to say it first. We've already gone to, um, a joint departmental meeting on this and we've received all of the comments. And I submitted, um, I think it was towards the end of last week or maybe it was early this week, a revised plan which incorporates, I think, most of the changes that were requested at those various meetings. So I just, hopefully the, the plan that you have before you now will incorporate a lot of the comments that you're going to hear when Mr. Espio reads them momentarily, I assume.
I guess the only other thing that I would, um, I would offer to you is, um, in the basement, underneath the tower is a tank room. In that tank room, we keep bulk fluids. They typically tend to be cubes, but the oil is delivered just like, uh, home heating fuel is delivered. Same truck, it's just sectioned with the various viscosity oils. Those deliveries happen while we're in business, so at the start of the business day, so the manager's there. All that oil is manifested. We know exactly how much comes in. And then underneath each of the cars is a rolling drain pan where we gather the used oil. That used oil is stored, there are two five-hundred gallon tanks in that tank room. That oil is recycled, so a second truck comes and that oil is actually recycled and, and put back into use. As far as deliveries, um, filters and those things come, we have a point-of-sale system. So U P S comes a couple of times a week and drops off various oil filters and air filters and light bulbs and that thing. But we don't have, uh, tractor trailers or anything of that nature coming.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Brian Wallace, he's the, um, site engineer, so is there any questions along that? And, uh, but I also mentioned, uh, we brought our L S P. It's a very sensitive environmental site. You're probably all aware, there was a gas spill up there years ago. That spread down into the, into the, the high school field and, uh, it was pretty significant. So, um, the current owner of the property has had, um, a lot of work done there over the years. And it was important, as we planned this construction and, and, and go through the construction process, that we don't, um, wreck whatever good work has been done all these years. So we're working with Bill, um, with the Board of Health and also with the Concom, as far as the way that this, the, the, the construction will work and, and where we can, um, where we have to be careful and things of that nature. So I just wanted the board to be aware that, we're all aware of that and that's, that's part of the process.
Do you have a date as to when you're appearing before the Board of Health?
We already, already have. They've already voted, they've, their comments and their vote is in the package.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and, um, and I think.
Have you, have Concom yet officially?
No, we've, um, we've actually corresponded quite a bit with John Kylie. And, um, John's worked with us, approved what we needed to have approved. But ultimately, the Board of Health will be granting the specific permits along with the town's environmental engineer. And I think the only thing I'd add to that is Exxon's been working on this site for about twenty years with the Harringtons. Bill, uh, is working with their L S P. Our goal here is to improve the site. So as a result of us removing quite a bit of soil, there was tank removals. We have done some other testing on the site. We found some hydraulic fluids and some other things. And we recently secured, which is very difficult today, the ability to have all those materials brought off-site and treated as part of this. So we've already gained capacity at a Southern New Hampshire site. So we've already gained capacity at a Southern New Hampshire site when we start construction. So our goal would be to remove everything that we need to for the basement and whatever fill would come back would be clean and we'd work with the town environmental engineer and Board of Health on those things.
Thank you. Kristen?
Were you at the DCM when they came? Yes. I was just asking Liz if she was at the development, the coordination meeting when they came, because I actually was not. So I'm going to intro and then Liz can wrap up. So the site, we all know the site, let's show a picture of the site. I don't know if it's a tough site or just a site that hasn't got much attention for a little while. But I think here, there's no, can you go to the picture?
Yeah.
So there's no curb, no curb, no sidewalk, no definition, nobody, well, if they do walk there, it's, probably don't like walking there. So I think this is an opportunity to reclaim the corner, reclaim the sidewalk, and just kind of shape that whole corridor. Currently, the sidewalk is in front of Metro Credit Union to the south, I mean, to the north. And then to the south, it's in front of Burlington House of Pizza. Whatever we can do to try to make those connections, I think we should try to do. The traffic flow, the traffic volume, we're still kind of just taking a look at that. I don't have any, you know, red flag worries about it, but we're just still under review. And they, in meeting with them earlier, we've talked about very much enhanced landscaping around the site. This is a non-conforming use. It's continuing to be a non-conforming use. It's two bays now, it's going to three bays with this proposed use. However, it is going from a full-service garage to a limited uses as offered here with just the oil changes and fluids versus, you know, the full-scale auto repair, which is something to consider. And something that I actually want to try to get a little bit more information from you guys on before the next meeting. And just so we can kind of take into account that, kind of, that this is that limited use versus the full scale. So therefore, the expansion is or is it not more, substantially more detrimental, which is the finding that this board needs to make. So, and then there's a, so it's a non-conforming structure and premises and non-conforming use. And then you have a site plan in front of you. So you do have to make the determination that the proposed use is not substantially more detrimental than the existing use. You know, whatever they can do to help remediate any existing contamination is obviously a huge plus. And with that, unless there's anything else that, from the department comments, that Liz attended that I was not at that meeting to add.
So I was at the DCM on, it was actually August thirteenth. Most of the discussion at the DCM with other departments was regarding stormwater, which they've covered, any type of contamination which they've covered. And so I think that it's, everything's pretty much been covered by other departments at their meetings. So it's good.
Very good, thank you. Ernie, do you want to start us off?
Comments?
Want to hear from, okay, we'll hear comments first.
Okay. Spectra of buildings. Approval with the following recommendations. Number one, favorable decision from the Board of Appeals for impervious coverage within the AquaFire Water Resource District.
Blessings.
Number two, favorable approval from the Planning Board for setbacks. An applicant has submitted specifications slash information to the Building Department that shows proposed construction materials are building code compliant for proper fire raining resistant when close to the property line. Number three, suggest storm drains be installed. Number four, redesign of H dot C parking required. Load, unload aisle for van parking requires a minimum of eight foot two inches. ABB twenty-three, HC parking signs required at both parking spots. Number five, main entry door requires a minimum of an eighteen-inch flat sidewalk to the right of the door for handicapped approach access into the building. Also from the Building Department, approval with the following recommendations, that we have a favorable Section Six finding from the Planning Board. DPW is the same DPW comments that we have usually. Fire Department's favorable. And the Board of Health has given us four pages of comments.
Well, I think three and a half of them are the contamination.
Okay.
But you have these?
Have you been given a copy of all the comments?
Yes, we have them and we've reviewed them in depth, not dissimilar from the redevelopment of the gas station at the wind in Cambridge Street. So.
Those are the department comments.
Okay, well, then why don't you start off with the questions you may have, Mike?
I will, Madam Chair, thank you. So how often do the trucks come to fill with oil and take away the oil to be recycled?
Typically, once a week, but it might stretch to ten days.
Once a week, ten days. And where on the site is the hookup, where do they come in to do that?
The street side of the building, so where the pointer happens to be for the mouse right there. In that, between, midway between there and the front corner, as I spoke, that's the tower section of the building and underneath that is a tank room. So there'll be an opening at the side of the building. When you open it up, it has all of the, has all of the fills that you would typically see, like for home heating fuel. So they make those connections. There's also black iron pipe that comes up with a whistle in it. That's just to let them know when the tank is full. But no delivery can be made without personnel in the building.
Does that happen during normal business hours or when typically do you take care of those?
We have them deliver at the beginning of the business day, so that truck would show up there sometime between 7:30 and 8:00. And it would typically show up a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday morning because they tend to be our least busy times.
And my last question is, you said it was a convenience aspect. I like that it's quick and you're in and out. So when you're driving down Cambridge Street, can you see into the building to see all the bays, to see if there are openings or?
Yeah, so there's, and I apologize, we did have some renderings of the building and I don't have them, but I thought they were part of the package. But, so they're full glass doors, they're twelve-foot high, so as folks approach, they can look in, they can see as they turn to the right whether there's any cars queuing outside, as well as look in the bays. In the warm weather, the bay doors are open during hours of operation, which gives you even clearer view.
Okay, my only concern there is it's a pretty busy street and the cars do go fast and hopefully, we're not having, you know, a derby, but that's all I have. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you want to just leave right there, Liz, a great thank you. On the landscaping plan, I think the landscaping is really good, except for right in front of Cambridge Street on the left-hand side there. It's between right, that one and the one on the right is basically pretty, pretty blank, and that's where you want most of it. So if you kind of took the same one you see over near the J and Phillips, that line of landscaping, take that and put that right in front of Cambridge Street, I think that's what you'd probably want to end up doing, just to give that stuff, just a nice look off of Cambridge Street. I think that'd be beneficial.
Okay. We had some discussions at one of the other meetings about visibility. So folks exiting our property and being able to look at Cambridge Street. So there is a large tree that was overgrown in our original plans. We had a much larger specimen tree and it was suggested to us, perhaps just a small, low planting bed was the best for visibility and for safety. Apparently, there's quite a few cars that turn and go down there. There's a number of automotive businesses back there and other things, so.
Of Edwards?
Edwards.
There's businesses back there?
Yeah, there's Autobody.
I never knew there was a street there.
Oh, yeah, there is an Autobody back there.
There's Autobody, there's a shop that services exotics, Maseratis, Ferraris. There's a detailing shop, there's quite a bit.
Doesn't go through, right?
No, no, it does not.
So they said to keep them lower so you can get the visibility for the turn?
Sightlines. Sightline. So what we did is we put large specimens along the back of the property. So there's currently a fence there that's not in great shape. We were going to replace that. You can see we put large, I don't know if they're red oaks or something, but we did put a series of trees along the back of the property. We like landscaping. We use professional landscapers and folks to do the grass and the shrubs. So again, all part of the curb appeal that separates us from our competitors.
I guess what I'm, and I understand sightlines, but what I'm talking about is that gap that you've got there between the one at the entrance, to the right, and then that little island there. So if you can think about putting, again, similar things, you could put it right against that building where you, we've got the discharge and the fill tanks. You can move it back so your sightline's not a problem there, right against, right in that, right in that.
We could do low line.
I think what you'd like us to do is that, where the pointer is now, you'd like us to enlarge that panning bed and come back towards the entrance.
So again, right from that point over to the right.
Okay.
Right in the no-man's land right there. And again, you don't have to do it within the sightline, you can move it back and keep it low, but just something.
Either move it back or keep it low line.
Yeah.
We don't want to create safety problems.
Right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ernie?
A couple of questions. So you, what did you say, the service takes fifteen minutes per car, is that what you said?
Fifteen minutes, yes.
Fifteen minutes. So you probably wouldn't have a lot of cars outside queuing at any one time or not?
No, I, well, I would profess to you that on certain holiday weekends, we could have six, six or seven cars waiting just because people want to go to the beach for the long weekends or travel for the holidays. But typically, you would see three or four cars. Again, it's that convenience factor. Folks know they can circle back, see what the line looks like, and then go about it. And that's been our experience over our thirty years in operation.
And you believe that you have enough room inside there to queue those cars if you needed to, and other?
Yes, this is actually a smaller site than either the Woburn, I mean, a larger site than the Woburn site and the Arlington site. And the Woburn site averages seventy-five cars a day. The Arlington site averages forty-eight and a half cars a day. So we're confident.
Half car, that's a killer.
Okay, and as Tom mentioned, there's some, was and is some contamination on the site. Is there still a treatment facility on the site? Do they, was there a little house with air stripping or something? Do they treat on the site at the moment? Tom, do you know?
No, there's no treatment right now. The site has got a temporary solution.
Can you use the microphone?
Yeah, right there, thanks.
There's no treatment at the site right now.
There is no treatment.
No, there has been some treatment over the years. This disposal site is, I think, about twenty-five years old. There's been a lot of excavation out there.
Okay, so most of the site has been cleaned up, is that basically what you're saying?
I think that's fair to say. There's one monitoring well that's giving the existing consultant that a hard time. All the other wells are doing pretty good, but there is, we found some other residual there that maybe cut loose here within the last ten, fifteen years, but we're going to address that ourselves.
Were you able to, I'm not sure, I don't remember what the building sits like out there. Were you able to examine the area that you're going, obviously going to be digging some pits, I believe, right, for?
We did borings.
I can't.
We did borings.
You did do borings. In that area where the pits are going?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And our expectation is that when we take the building down, that perhaps there was some migration under the building, so through the Board of Health, Bill can elaborate on this, but we will do additional testing of those soils and make sure that if there's anything impacted, that's addressed as well outside of the foundation. We're, just so everybody knows and comfortable, we're very used to gasoline sites. They're great corners, they fit well for our particular business, and we've worked with Bill for thirty years.
Yep.
So.
Take about eight hundred tons of soil out of there.
Are you? How many yards is that roughly?
Oh, I don't know what's.
Eight hundred tons.
We pay, but we pay by the ton.
Over a thousand.
And I'm sure all the contamination on the site is under the field now, right, Tom?
And we're also going to have a treatment system on site because we're going to have to do some de-watering.
Oh, okay.
So there will be some treatment.
During construction, you mean, or?
Construction, yes. Because anything, any water that's removed out there is going to be assumed to be contaminated and it's going to be treated with activated carbon and discharged back into the environment. And we just received that permit of approval from EPA to discharge to a stream, which is going to be down close to the high school.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I think you're obviously going to make the site look better and it looks like the use can be accommodated there, so good.
Okay, thank you, Ernie. Paul?
That was going to be my question.
Sorry, Paul.
There were sites all over town, any place there was a gas station, needed remediation. And Ed Warner, in particular, on the Board of Health, kind of took that on as a project. But some of these, the one at the street, the, everybody at that time, I mean, you changed your, you dumped the old oil in the backyard and they, no, really, they just, you know, they were all really contaminated. And some of the contamination went under the road on one of the sites and down towards the high school.
Yeah.
And it was being remediated down there. So they've, I think, pretty much taken care of that, hopefully. But I'm seeing somebody trying to get their oil changed on the average night at six o'clock, five o'clock, I mean, Cambridge Street. Yeah, it's going to, I hope people will pay attention because it's going to be a prime spot for accidents with people coming in there and lining up and so forth. So when, I see there's one opening to go in, so you go in and pull in, do you, the person stay in their car and pull it in front of one of the bays?
Yeah, so you'll pull in and then you'll be greeted some by one of our customer service team members and then they'll, they'll put you, either they'll guide you into the facility or in this particular poster, they'll post you just outside it and then guide you in when it, the bay frees up. But you never leave your car. That's the premise that we operate under and there's no cars left on the site after hours.
Right. No, I wasn't as concerned with that, but I was just thinking, I was busy. There's going to be three cars there and, yeah, they do move them along. My son called it jubiloo. We call it jubiloo. And it's going to add a lot of the kind of traffic we don't like generally. And so my question to the staff was, what is the zoning on this site, just out of curiosity?
I think it's.
Sorry to, it's getting later.
I just, I hit a wall like half an hour ago. But, no, it's, I think, yeah, it is, it's a general business zone, but automotive is only allowed in the BT district, which this is not. But the whole corridor here is BG zone, general business.
So this is in effect grandfather.
Yes, it's a Section Six finding. Yep, for the use and for the structure.
Okay.
Yep. So it's, it is a.
All I can envision on, you know, a busy day, having to have higher detail, you know, to get people out of there, because, you know, if you have two or three cars in the bay and they're lining up, I could see a situation where you wouldn't be able to put more cars in because the cars couldn't get out, you know?
They go out the other way. They go right through the building and out the other side.
And take a right on that street and go where?
A left.
A left. I understand, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
When you get cars coming out and they may, it may actually slow down their operation if it's successful, and it probably will be, because the cars won't be able to get out because the car's got to get out onto Cambridge Street.
It'll also be staggered too. I mean, they're not all finishing at the same time, I bet.
Sure.
Not finishing and the light, the light back at the office building staggers the traffic as well.
Right.
We're between two light cycles. We've been out there looking at that.
Yeah, between that one and the corporate traffic.
I will, I will admit that I don't expect folks that are going, I need to get my bearings right, south during the rush hour to try to cross what's effectively two lanes of traffic to come in. So they'll have to, what a lot of people do in both our Arlington store and our Woburn store in particular, is they do their errands in order so they come back and it's a right turn in for them.
Okay. Exciting making, coming out and making a left during a lot of the day.
I would not advise it.
Along the front, you know, at the Herb Chambers dealership, when they wanted to make a, that Sturgis lot, we made them put all that vegetation in there and so, and I would almost write this, this would be an opportunity for a place like that. And I would almost write us, this would be an opportunity for a place like that where it's a, you know, a use of automobiles and that kind of thing. Wouldn't it be nice if we could get some nice trees and so forth? You're, you're thinking you want to be able to look in.
Oh, no, no, we weren't thinking we want to be able to look in. We had, Bill was asking for that, but apparently, who was it? Engineering told you about, that you couldn't put anything high there because of sightlines?
Might have been. Yeah, it was a safety officer.
The safety officer, because of sightlines of people trying to get out of Edwards, they can't have anything too high there.
So we, we added, I think there's six trees along the back of the property line.
Right, and, and I, I like Bill's suggestion, though, that you continue the landscaping along, but set it back toward the building and, and then maybe have some low lying things like flowers in the front.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Yeah.
And we do have a sidewalk along there, so that's nice.
Well, we need to, yeah, that's something I want to talk about more.
All right, I see.
Okay.
I see the rest of my time.
All right, so I have a couple of questions. I do want you to come back with a revised landscape plan. I also want to see the building, and I think we need to talk about the tower. How big is the tower? What's on the tower? How is the tower lit?
I can send that electronically again, I apologize.
So we need to talk about that because.
The tower isn't lit, it's a brick tower.
Okay.
The light, the signage on the tower is LED backlit, I don't know what, we'll have to work through the signage with it. And there's, there's a sign on both faces, so in this particular case, there'd be a sign facing Cambridge Street and facing Edwards.
Okay. Oh, okay, facing Edwards and Cambridge, okay.
And I'd also point out, we didn't need a height variance, so.
Not a really high tire, okay.
I believe it's twenty-three foot.
Okay. Well, you're going to bring a rendering of the building next time, and that will give us a better idea.
Yeah, I apologize, I thought we had one.
So I'm very pleased to see that we're going to not have that completely open space where cars can just come in anywhere they want. It's nice to have something where they're directing people through a very clearly defined curb cut. I'm also very pleased to see sidewalk. I have some questions. Is this sidewalk along Edwards Street that I'm seeing as well?
That's correct, it doesn't exist today, but we were trying to tidy up the corner.
And the sidewalk extends over the front of your site?
That doesn't exist today either.
Right, and I'm very, very glad to see it, with, with a grass strip between the, that's, with the grass strip between Cambridge Street and the sidewalk. I think that's very important. I'd like to talk to you about extending that sidewalk off of your site in the direction toward House of Pizza. I don't know how far we can go, but because this is a Section Six finding, and we need to make a determination that this is not significantly more detrimental, I think that would go a long way toward fixing up the site and, and making it safer. And it's not really that long a distance, because there's really, is that J. N. Phillips, is that? Yep, yep. If we could just, because your property goes right up to where the pavement changes there, right?
Yeah, there's a pizza place, isn't there?
To the edge there, so up to the pizza place, not in front of the pizza place, but that, that little piece right in front of J. N. Phillips, that would really be great.
The only problem with that, and that, that did come up in the discussions, obviously, we don't own that land. And, you know, I'm not sure we can just go putting things on other people's property without, you know, their permission and their.
We have lawyers.
But, so I, I mean, that, that, that's a practical problem, frankly. If you don't own the land, you really can't be improving the land.
Right, we have to figure out where their curb cut would go.
State highway permits that we'd have to pull, so I don't know that we could pull them on behalf of the other property owner. And then we'd be making a determination of what their curb cut was.
Yeah, okay, no, no, I, I follow you there. I just, I understand, it's just I know there's a sidewalk that comes almost up to House of Pizza, and then there's going to be this gap.
Well, it's, it's a shorter gap than there is now, also.
That's true, that's true.
So it, it stops right after the, I guess that's now a Hess gas station.
Oh, there's a, there's a tiny piece of it in front of House of Pizza, yeah.
I don't think that's, I don't think it's concrete or it has.
It's not a nice sidewalk. I don't think it is concrete, so you're doing a concrete sidewalk with vertical granite and a grass strip? Okay, and it goes around the corner and a little ways down Edwards?
To the, to the driveway.
Nobody ever walks on Edwards, do they?
Well, they will now, there's a sidewalk.
Because I would much prefer to see that, I would actually forego the sidewalk on Edwards if we could get it in front of J. N. Phillips. I think it's more.
Again, we own, we own Edwards. Plus, as Randy said, I think it was a desire to define that corner a little too, by putting the sidewalk there with the strip and the, and the, it does define.
I understand that. I think the sidewalk is more valuable on Cambridge Street. I understand the problem. Staff, is there any way we can work around that problem, or are we just stuck?
I didn't hear the question.
The problem of trying to extend the sidewalk in front of J. N. Phillips, I was saying I'd rather see it there than on Edwards Street, but because they don't own the property.
If you go back, go back to the plan.
It's in that part of it in the right of way?
Go back to the plan, most, I mean, I, if you look at where Edwards and Cambridge meet, and you look at the pro, sidewalk in the property line, there's quite a bit of room there as you come along. This, I mean, the sidewalk itself is a hundred percent in the right of way of Cambridge Street in these drawings, so.
So the, so they could put it in front of J. N. Phillips?
In front of J. N. Phillips, you're not talking about someone else's property, you're talking about the same right of way they're in here.
Okay.
Where's the curb cut?
But, I mean, I think you need to explore a little, make, make sure that width does exist, but if it's all in the right of way, you're not talking about.
Right, and then we'd have to just, you know, work with J. N. Phillips, make sure that they're happy with where the curb cut is. And I understand this is not easy, I, I'm not.
We're pausing a curb cut on, on, on Phillips, and, you know, that's going to affect their business, so. I don't think we're the ones that should be telling them where they are going to enter their site. I don't think we can do that.
Oh, no, I wasn't suggesting that you tell them, I was suggesting that you build the sidewalk and ask them where they want their curb cut.
You're good, Tom, you're good.
We'll table that for the next, I'd like you to think about it, and maybe reach out to J. N. Phillips and see if they might be willing to work with you on this. And perhaps they would even share in the costs with you on.
I don't believe they own the building, I believe they lease it.
I think it's R.J. Kelly. I'll see what I can do.
They should help pay for the sidewalk.
Yeah, they'd be okay with that.
I'll, I'll, I'll try to make a phone call and see.
That would be great, thank you, Tom.
Get a conversation.
Thank you.
I guess the only other thing I'd ask is, it is state highway, so are there any plans for any upgrades of the state highway? Because I've seen other sections of Route Three where they've.
You don't want to go there.
We wish they would. We have no control over that.
Other areas were similar discussions that, like you're having here, where they've added sidewalks, so.
So, those two things aside, I'm very pleased to see that there's additional landscaping, especially having a normal curb cut there, I think is a huge benefit. It's definitely going to look better than what was there previously. And personally, I kind of like the idea of a fifteen minute oil change too, so that's not a bad thing either. I do think we're going to continue this, but do you have any questions for us?
No, I, just with respect to the continuance, if you could put us on the next agenda. And obviously, we understand there's a process here, and we're going to get you all the information that you asked for. There is somewhat of an urgency here because to get this thing going, and the Harrington family as well, would like us to get it going. So we'll get you the items that you requested, sort of prior to next meetings, and we'll get it to staff so that it can be distributed. I'll try to contact the owner of the site for J. N. Phillips to see if there's any interest or willingness for them to cooperate.
Yeah. I understand that you don't have control.
I'll pass the substance of the conversation on, but we would, every, every other department has weighed in and we've met all their concerns, so obviously, from our standpoint, in the best case scenario, we'd love to get this wrapped up at our next meeting.
I don't see anything that would prevent that. I speak, I'm only one person, but I don't see any over, any insurmountable obstacles here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate the time.
Motion made to continue planning meeting of October sixteen, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm leaving.
You swear? All right. Okay, we, didn't we have a bunch of minutes?
Yeah.
We did.
Three.
We did. If you remember the dates, we can still vote on them. If we can still vote on them.
We can find them.
Bill can ring, pull them up, because we, we're, we're under, we're in hot water over minutes, let's get those cranked out as soon as we can.
Thank you so much.
Right here, I got them.
Bring them up here.
They're.
You got them? Okay, you got them, good.
Meetings of May second, June seventh, and July eighteenth.
Great, have members have a chance.
Excuse me, you're right.
May second.
Two thousand nineteen, July eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, in.
June.
Looks like June seventh, two thousand eighteen.
Right.
One fell through the cracks.
Yeah.
Was it supposed to be nineteen, and you?
No, it was supposed to be eighteen.
It was eighteen.
Pretty sure.
Yeah.
So have all the members that are here had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Great. Can we vote on them together, or does, do some people need to vote on them separately because they were not here?
It's headed to a small change.
Well, actually, you can't vote on the twenty eighteen. So why don't we vote on them separately?
Okay, motion, motion to accept the minutes of, what did I say?
Let's take the two twenty-nineteens together.
May second nineteen and July eighteenth nineteen.
Those are the ones.
Second.
All those in favor?
As, as, as.
As amended?
As amended.
As amended, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, five zero, and then we have.
Motion to accept the minutes of June seventh, twenty eighteen.
Second, as amended.
As amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, abstain, so it is four zero one.
Can we talk away?
All right, we have no other matters, and we've already discussed the open meeting law training, I think, so we can move on to a report from the Airbnb Subcommittee, and it is.
But quickly on open meeting law, I know the clerk wanted at least one member of the board, but I mean, she wants all members of the boards, and.
Oh, I understand.
And especially for the remote participation piece, I would, if we are going to entertain it, I would very much recommend that we all, including staff, attend.
Agreed. One of the two meetings.
The meeting law for that piece of it, because it is going to be a little tricky to figure out.
Is that a Friday?
I don't know.
No, it's a Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay, okay.
She wanted to count two or something, or was it?
Yeah, so, so anyway, I just wanted to say that, if, if we're going to go down that road.
Agreed. So Airbnb Subcommittee, you got fifteen minutes.
Yep, we can do it, quicken that.
All right.
I just closed on my computer.
I know, me too.
Do you guys have the minutes that we, did Mike just submit that to the staff? Yeah, just pull up, are you down there too from your computer?
I don't know.
I can pull it up.
Those were from Mike.
Yep.
Here we go. Mike said, sounds good to me.
You have them pulled up, okay.
So, I'll shoot from here, Mike. So we, we met on the thirtieth, Members' President, R. Spe on Gaffney, we took some feedback from the board and kind of came up with some actions here. And she's with the, with the date of October, what'd you say, twenty-sixth, it's going to be in for the January town meeting. Revised bylaw, I think if we give ourselves that hard deadline, I think we do something. Because we came up with the idea of just say, with the existing bylaws we have, we can modify that just to incorporate what we, what we need to do for the Airbnb, now the short term stay laws, I don't think it's going to be, I'll flip on it, it's just going to be a slight modification to capture what we're missing there. And we, and I talked about coordinating with the, the zoning bylaw review committee.
Great.
On what we have, so if we can do that fairly quick with Mike and I, just kind of take some edits of the existing bylaw and forward it over to like Sherry and crew, like to get that, see if we can do that in the next couple of weeks. Maybe notify the Building Inspector for enforcement of the current short term stay, so that a list, we know, we have some addresses there. I think if we can get out there and ask the Building Inspector to, to ask them to come before the board here to get a special permit of the existing stuff that they're doing today, that kind of gets, gets that, that going, and then we can kind of parlay that into the process of registration. We thought that, we didn't really need to do anything different, because coming before this board for the, the special permit is basically registering your short term, your short term rental. The only thing to, that would kind of add on that was maybe to, to condition that with yearly compliance of safety regulations, smoke detectors, CO2 detectors, things like that, maybe there's a standard condition that we add to each one of those. Maybe it's something like, on a yearly basis, you need to submit evidence that these are working, whether they have the fire department out there and do it.
You might want to talk to the fire department about that.
Right, so, we're, we're, today, there's no, you know, it's a one shot deal when you buy a house and then they, they bless it, but this is different, because you're having short term rentals in there. And then the, the condition of registering with the town for tax of those rentals, now, we talked about maybe it doesn't add value, but since they're going to be registering anyway, and I don't know how it works with, with businesses when you have to register for the town for, you know, for hotel rooms to get the added Burlington tax, how that works, but it would be that same condition, register and then submit to the town each time you have a rental, or it is a monthly or quarterly, I don't know how that, but it works, but that would be another condition, so we would gain that, that revenue however much, based on the short term rentals. We're going to look at the bylaw for the maximum stay of the short term rentals, we talked a little bit about six months, I'm not sure what's currently in the bylaw, whether we modify that to keep it the same. That's just proposed, but we could certainly talk about that. Other than that, it's a long term rental.
Uh, yeah, we need to, we need to define short.
Is there a definition in there?
Yeah, I think it's.
We don't have a definition of short and long term.
Right, it's not, it's not defined.
I mean, we have like temporary and full time.
We should definitely define it.
Right, so that's what kind of, just Mike and I were just quickly talking about six months, maybe that's the right number, maybe it's not.
Well, most of the Airbnb, that, most of the short term are thirty, is it twenty-nine or more days, or is it?
Just the, yeah, just the, yeah.
Like, less than thirty is kind of the magic number for.
So we, we should use that, then, whatever that is.
Because most, most leases are thirty days, a month, a month.
Right, right, that's true.
So if it's less than a month a month, it's regulated under these type of things.
You have twenty-four days to do this.
Right, yeah, well, we can, we can hit it, I mean, Mike and I are pretty aggressive on that, so, you know, if we can get some, some of that information, even if we can kind of start it and then modify it afterwards, I think, you know, I always kind of think of, as you see me in the board, just, just bite off small ones, you know, and kind of gain that, and if we have to modify that after the fact, I think that's probably a win. And then we talked about the compliance of that, and how you, how you work with that, and maybe a, a monthly search of the website for Burlington, once we have the ones that are already there, then how do you add that? And then we talked about what Boston does, and maybe if there's someone in our planning department, I think most of it, the planning department's here, aren't they? If we have any connections in Boston and how they work with the Airbnb to be registered, and if they weren't registered, then, you know, then they, with the town, then they can't be registered on Airbnb, so what's that mechanism that Boston uses?
What Boston does?
Call the Airbnb planner that's on staff in Boston with their hundreds of planners.
There you go, I mean, they got something, so just, let's, let's parlay.
Probably do have a person, probably special people to manage this thing.
But if we could parlay that, you know, I mean, just say, hey, whatever Boston is doing for Burlington.
Isn't that a state tax also?
I don't know what it is, if it's a, yeah, because it was a government, right?
Because, doesn't, doesn't the town only get two quarters of a cent? Meals and, meals and, is it the same thing?
Hotel, but it's, this is.
Hotel's a little different than.
Is it?
I think a state.
I know it's a state one that they added to it just recently, but, you know, I don't know if that falls on the hotel, or we can.
No, it started July, July first. It was this, this summer.
Yeah.
Well, meals tax ended up a lot of money.
Discuss how to handle individual room rentals as opposed to whole house rentals, and the problems that we worried about with people, you know, renting out a basement where they don't have sufficient egress and all of that.
Yeah, that's a good point. Windows, often have to define how we.
Camper, they're driving.
If we go rooms versus whole house versus suites.
Important question, because the problem is, if it's a whole house or a whole apartment, we know that it's been inspected and fire people can get in and out and save people if there's something awful happens, but if they're renting out individual rooms in their house, we don't have that assurance. Personally, I think we should say that it has to be the whole house or the whole apartment.
And not just a room.
And not just a room, because you don't know if it's just a room, if.
Or if it's in a basement with, with no windows and egress.
Well, wouldn't the inspection that you do for your CO2 and your fire detectors, that would.
We'd have to, we'd have to put that as a requirement.
Yeah.
That the, if it is, if it's more than a, if it's less than a house, then you say, it's got to have, it's got to be defined as a bedroom with windows and, and access and things like that. I wouldn't imagine the site.
And if it's a full house, if it's a, if it's a full house, do, would we have any control over that? If I want to rent my house out, do I have to go to anybody and get a license?
So, no, you do not. The, the question about full house first, rooms came up, because a full house has an occupancy permit, presumably, that the full house has been inspected and it's.
Right, right.
Whereas a room.
I follow that.
Who knows if it's in the basement or whatever. But to the point of renting rooms and the provision. But to the point of renting rooms and the provision that's already in the bylaw, I don't think it speaks to renting your whole house because type of form of ownership isn't controlled by zoning.
Right.
You can't limit someone from...
Yeah, just like condos or apartments.
Do you own your house, do you rent the house or whatever, you know? It's still a house and someone still lives in it and the, but, but that's an aspect of if you, if we do, if it's an under, it seems like this kind of under 30-day short-term rental regulation should cover rental of your Airbnb kind of short-term rental in your house because we can't, I don't, I don't think we can ever get at the month-to-month rental of your property.
No.
For a long-term.
That's not what I was trying to get at.
No, no, I know.
I was just trying to get at...
Defining what we're going to regulate.
People having renters in the basement where they could get trapped in a fire.
Right.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Yeah, and that is, once you get inspection, that, that should be, you know, because the building inspector says unless you have to, I believe, unless you have two means of egress...
Is the building department going to have the capacity to inspect?
Well, that's the other thing.
But, but...
Oh, the fire department.
And would the fire department at least report that it, it wasn't an acceptable? I don't know. I don't know.
So that's the things you go, you struggle with. Maybe that's kind of plan B on this, you know?
Well, yeah, and I know where you're coming from, for sure. You don't want to get...
You want them to be safe.
Right.
Yeah, that's the whole idea here, yeah.
Well, then that was the first flush kind of, okay, well, if we, if we don't know what we're going to do and we're not going to put this whole thing in place, let's at least say you can't Airbnb, you have to Airbnb your whole house for short-term rental.
Yeah, something like that, yes.
If we're not going to do anything else at that point. And that was kind of where we were a year ago, we talked about it.
Yeah, it was the first step, otherwise then you get the mechanism, get it put in place for the, for the shorter term.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. I know you guys have been doing a lot of work. I really appreciate that.
Good job.
Very much.
Thank you.
Look at this water door.
All right.
Give it what's next. So we'll try to shoot for the, to get that, the deadlines at least modified, so we put onto the...
Sure. Paul, what do you have?
Historically, when somebody's served on the planning board, you're rubbing your head.
No, I'm agreeing with you. Please, yes.
No, historically, when somebody's served for a long time, like 20 years or more or whatever, we recognize their service by giving them a nice retirement chair. And I think that it's appropriate that we do that for our recently retired member.
I agree.
And we usually, we, we know he's going to have to come back because we give him a chair as name in it, you know?
He'll have to come back.
Can't go to anybody else.
We definitely need to do something to acknowledge all of Jack's contribution.
Say what?
We definitely need to do something to acknowledge Jack's contribution and a chair and probably some other things as well.
Whatever else we do, I think that would be nice to do that at any rate.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
Absolutely.
Agreed.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, yes. Yeah, I got to, you'll have to ask Ruth because she came with me. Remember, I went out to Western part of Massachusetts and picked up two or three chairs.
Oh, yeah.
I forget who was retiring, but anyways.
Okay, we should definitely do that. Thank you, Paul.
Okay.
All right, anybody have anything else?
And party.
Yes.
Yeah.
And a party, yes.
Sure.
That's it?
That's it.
All right.
Well, I suggest the chair and you can do the party. I have a question, Madam Chair. Do we have any applicants for the position that, I know it's only been posted for a couple of days, but...
It's only been posted for a couple of days. Last time I, I mean, the, the applications will go into Amy Warfield and she will give them to Kristen. Kristen, as of earlier today, had not yet received any, but it's possible, I, I want to actually call Amy about this tomorrow as I wondered if perhaps she was planning to, you know, gather them all and deliver them as a package. That's possible. She may not want to send them over one at a time.
Oh, yeah.
I'll check with her tomorrow, but we have not received any.
Thank you.
Thank you. We, we've been told that there's a lot of interest though, which is a great thing.
Hmm. I keep us posted, please, on what the...
Oh, of course.
What the, what the process is going to be.
We are still working out the process.
Oh, yeah, but, but the applications on the website, so, but yes, we're still working on it.
Yes, we will definitely update you all when the process has been finalized. We are in the, in the negotiation process right now.
Let's just whisper in my ear. We need to vote on next year's schedule because we haven't yet. I handed it out two meetings ago, totally forgot about it at the last meeting to remind you. It's the same schedule as this year.
I think we can vote.
So before 11:00?
Does anyone have any objections to this schedule as printed?
Nope, so made.
If we need to modify things, we can.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded.
Yes.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, okay, we've accepted the meeting schedule for next year.
All right, we just were running up against submission deadlines for next year, so...
That's fine. Okay, sounds good.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned.